The April State Board Work Session will now come to order. Denise, will you please call the roll?
Rachel Wise.
Present.
Lilly Larson.
Present.
Glenn Flint. John Whittl.
Here.
Molly O'Halloran.
Present.
Patricia Tam.
Yes.
Marie Nichols.
Yes.
Patrick McPherson.
Present.
We have seven present, one absent, and Commissioner Blumstadt.
Present.
Thank you. Information regarding the Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of this room, on the south side of the door. Live web streaming will be available through the State Board of Education website, www.education NE.gov/StateBoard. Board members, please remember to engage your microphones before speaking and turn them off when you are finished, and please turn off your personal cell phones. Thank you. First item is Board Reports, Dates and Discussion Items, and this is our opportunity to kind of talk about where we have been since our last board meeting. And I think we'll just start around the room and you just give the updates on all the activities or engagements you've been involved with since our last board meeting. And Pat, I'll just start with you, all right?
I've been home.
Okay.
And enjoyed it when you were here. Well, I've been home but working. But I've not attended anything special that I was asked to attend, but I did attend the ESU 9 Board Meeting this last, this last, three weeks ago, and that was quite interesting.
Pat?
I had the opportunity to attend the DECA opening session, and I've never seen so many young people with such a lot of loud music. And I couldn't help but be encouraged by their enthusiasm and the talent that they had, and they were electing, in the process of about to elect officers, and it was an enjoyable and a learning experience for me. So I enjoyed doing that. Last week, on the 29th, I was able to attend the Buffett Early Childhood Care Event here in Lincoln, and that was informative as to what they're doing and what they're finding out and what their efforts are. I think some of you were also there. It's amazing the opportunities we have to impact learning in those in the very early ages, between birth and the time they go to pre-K or kindergarten. So it was, and they've done some interesting studies, and they'll have some more coming out on that, but unfortunately I forgot to bring, unfortunately I forgot to bring their material with me, but I'll try to remember to do that tomorrow, and maybe we can share that with some people. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. John?
Good afternoon. I was honored to attend the NSCA Legislative Dinner with Glenn Flint, Lilly and Muri. That was a very, no, you were there. That was a very, thank you, Molly. That was a very good event. Also, I was privileged to attend the Bellevue University Site Visit with Sharon Cott in regards to they are seeking a secondary education degree at Bellevue, and Sharon Cott allowed me to, if you will, join the team as just an observer, and I greatly appreciate that. Glenn, Glenn and I, Rachel Wise and Cory, we attended a blended learning seminar at Westside Schools out at Oakdale, and that was very, very encouraging, and we picked up a lot of good information about blended learning and competency-based education, which we share with others. Was asked to attend a blended learning conference at the Educational Service Unit Number Three. Lots of enthusiasm in the state for blended learning, and also more information is being sought by more and more people regarding blended learning. I'll let Rachel Wise go into regards to the MOAC briefing that we attended in Omaha a couple of weeks ago. Also, along with Pat and a lot of others, we attended the Buffett Early Childhood Development Conference in Lincoln, and that was just an arousing success in regards to the information they provided. Worked with some constituents in regards to the General Education Development, the GED. They're very excited about it in my district. There's a lot, about 150 people in the state that with the adjustments of the GED grading, they will now be awarded their GEDs with the changes that are taking place. As a matter of fact, I'll let Sharon Cott brief most of that today, but exciting times for our people that have started and worked very hard with their GED travels, get where they are. Also worked with our constituents in the Literacy Center and the Latino Center of the Midlands in regards to working our GED programs. They're very, very popular amongst our communities, and those will continue on as such. And lastly, I'd like to say, for one of our major stock stakeholders and partners, the YMCA had celebrated their 150th anniversary within Omaha. The organization for years has supported early childhood development, mentoring and tutoring programs after school, and they will continue on, no doubt. And lastly, Rachel Wise and I, and Molly, we attended the FFA banquet this morning, and everybody got a band. They're leading the way in the state. Congratulations, and thank you, FFA. Thank you.
Thanks, John. I'd like to highlight two meetings I went to. The first was the NASA. It's actually Western Administrators, the superintendents, and we met Nogalala. It was nice because I could just get in my car and go and have lunch with them, and I spent the rest of the afternoon with them to hear their reports as well, and then came back home. It's kind of interesting because oftentimes we talk about how we don't really provide funding for schools, we create the policies, but when I'm with my administrators, a lot of their conversation is how they can enact the policies we create within the financial strictures that are created by the unicameral. So there was a lot of hot discussion over several of the bills relating the reduction of property tax and putting lids, especially on their QC puff, qualified undertaking, how do you say the whole word?
Qualified capital undertake. Oh, no, you just got messed up.
I just call it, I call it QC puff. It used to be for asbestos abatement, but now they're limiting it from the five cents to the three cents, and a lot of them were saying they've been trying to be responsible and delay repairs, and they were really a little bit concerned since a lot of the smaller districts are those 175 districts that are non-equalized, so they don't get state aid, and then they really rely on their general funds and then the QC puff if they need to modify existing site locations. So it was just kind of interesting because philosophically, they're really excited about AQuest. They are looking forward to more progress on the EBAs, and later today, we're going to be talking about it, so I won't mention, I won't mention the specifics, but they just said, please, when we continue the second tier or the EBAs know that they appreciated their times of reflection. It's kind of like teacher evaluation. They said that it really was important that they reflected on their own practices. So we're doing good things with EBA. And then my second one was GAC and NASB. Unfortunately, the GAC started meeting at 2:30 the day we arrived, and we didn't actually get in until like 3:30, 3:45. So on your emails, I've sent you all the documents, and then today I sent the letter to Secretary King. So you have all the information, and I missed the meeting, but I talked to Reg and my cohorts on the GAC, and they actually had a presentation at one of our luncheons, and it was very good. And Rachel and I will be reporting out at the NASB Annual Conference, and we're splitting it so we're not being repetitive, but those are my two. And plus FAA. And just in brief, I liked it when they had all the different speakers, but at my table, they were talking about family farming and how it's changed, and how the technology and science creates more opportunities for, for people outside of agriculture to come in and invest in Nebraska's biggest business.
Lilly?
Okay. I overlap with some of the meetings that others have attended, but I do want to say, yes, thanks for reminder about going to the NSCA Dinner. That was very well attended by probably close to 35 of the state senators, so more than anything, it was a really phenomenal opportunity to have a private, just casual conversation with state senators. It's an annual event and worthwhile to attend for others to go to in the future if you're in Lincoln. Then the one that Patrick mentioned, the DECA. You went to the early part, I went to the awards ceremony, and the music was still just as loud as it was earlier. And there must have been over 1,000 students in the auditorium cheering. I mean, and after a while, I was dancing with them. I mean, it was like contagious. They were so proud of the work that they had done with DECA, they must give out at least 100 different awards, and it's so well organized. The kids come up, get the awards, it just goes like this. It is phenomenal. So again, something else for people to attend if you have the opportunity and you're in town. Let's see, then I attended the NASB Standards Alignment Kickoff Meeting, which the representative, Robert Hall, from Washington DC office, the NASB office, came in, and the whole gist of the meeting was how important standards are, and better yet, the process of developing the standards, and you would have thought we wrote the book on how to write standards because everything that he recommended, we're doing that. And so it was reassuring. His main thing, of course, just as you mentioned, John, contact with the stakeholders, and that you get from them what they think that students need in the schools, and we can help put that into place through establishing standards. So there will be, Donlin attended that meeting, and so did Cory. Epler attended the meeting, and it was reflected, I believe you would agree, Donlin, that what was recommended are the things that we currently do in this department. Going on, the next meeting, I went to the Midwestern Higher Education Compact Dinner. The Commissioner attended as well, and the focus of this is attendance by the neighboring or the college system, and the interest in promoting post-secondary education. How many students are going on? How successful are the students who are going on? Keeping track, collecting the data on it to analyze, how are the different community colleges providing students the support to get the proper background to go on? Maybe the Commissioner has other things to mention about that, but they collect data, wouldn't you say? That's their main function. And lastly, also attended the University of Nebraska-Lincoln Early Childhood Report, and I do have that here with me today, so if anyone wants to look at that. Again, Sam Mizels, who is the Director of the Buffett Early Childhood Institute commissioned Gallup to do the survey. The survey results show an overwhelming support for early childhood education, and I, what I personally am hopeful for is that this is recognized through the legislature with appropriate funding for the early childhood programs. Definitely needed, it is wanted, and it is doable in the communities across, across the state. So that's it.
All right. Well, I'm not going to repeat too much of some of the things that I was able to go to that you also heard about as well. I do want to say, you know, this is a time of year with so many different student organizations and activities, and in particular, our career student organizations, DECA, FBLA, FFA, that it really is great to see so many youth involved in service and leadership organizations, which fundamentally is a key part of those organizations. It was an honor to give the welcome this morning, Commissioner, on your behalf. Thank you very much for that assignment, and, but it was just great. And this morning, we were just with a small group of 300 of the thousand-plus students that are here, and it just does, I think, our hearts good to know that we are really in good hands in this country when you spend time at a table with young people today that really are outstanding leaders in their own right. So that was outstanding. I also went to the Buffett, and then I went over to Lincoln High on that day to go and observe President Bowns, who is kicking off the new university system-wide Commit to Complete effort, which really is their effort to get young people to finish college in four years. And he shared with classes of juniors, one, the importance of, you know, being prepared, going to college, those kinds of things, but also did a really nice job in sharing with students the importance to plan and complete in four years. And so they have a project that's Commit to Complete, and they are really taking on the responsibility of some of the advising, planning, and really following and supporting students to complete in four years in the university system. As John mentioned, MOAC, I attended MOAC, John and I both did, and it was a subgroup. MOAC is Metropolitan Omaha Educational Consortium that UNO facilitates, and it was the HR folks, and their discussion and questions were really about kind of where we are with the teacher-principal standards and appraisal process, and I shared with them our report, Molly, that you had led, and had a discussion. Then we had an opportunity, John and I both, to just do a little bit of a listening session on some of the issues and concerns they have and questions about AQuest, which I think today we also will be discussing some of those pieces. As Molly mentioned, we just got back from NASB. I'm going to ask Donlin Rice to come up and join us for a few minutes so that we can report out on NASB. Donlin will share a little bit more of the grant, and as Lilly had mentioned, and then Molly and I will report out a little bit on some of the sessions, and I'll just kick off a little bit. We started with a joint session with CCSO. Peter Baker was the keynote speaker that evening, and really gave some insight into the field of political journalism, and we'll just leave it at that. It was quite, quite interesting from many perspectives.
Correctible to the presidential election.
So then a couple of the sessions that I attended. One that I attended was on the early learning and accountability, and it really gave food for thought of how, especially in Nebraska, we have prioritized early childhood and done a lot with early childhood, but kind of the session started with a point out, but you really aren't doing accountability till third grade. And so the messaging there, since, as we know, that with the reauthorization of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act with ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act, we as state boards have a significant responsibility going forward. In fact, it was stated several times, be careful what you ask for and wish for because you have it. And so our responsibilities going forward really are significant in comparison to the past in how we design systems in response to the federal legislation, but that also meets our needs. And so basically, this particular session talked about being thoughtful as you think about K-2 and accountability, and whether if you're running pre-K programs, how you think about accountability as it relates to PK through 2, and systems that really merge well with what you're already doing, but that really bring, and not from a perspective of just a test score, but truly a perspective of a broad accountability system to really think about early learning in that, that process, and in particularly PK through 2. Another session that I went to that just kind of dovetails in was actually a session that I was very fortunate to help, you know, be a little part of, and that was on accountability systems and designing accountability systems. And in that particular session, they really were highlighting three different approaches to accountability, to give some food for thought to three different approaches to accountability. In that particular session, what I walked away with is that we really are on the right track. We may not be there yet, but the importance of multiple measures, the importance of looking at more than a test score, looking at metrics, but also looking at some of those other areas of evidence, making sure your system embraces continuous improvement as a part of the process. It just, so many of the elements that were shared across the three particular areas really resonated well. One area that I found really intriguing was a report out on how in England, they focus on accountability through a process they call inspection. And it really was an interesting perspective. If we think about what we do with accreditation, and then you think about a different way to look at accreditation, it really merges well. I got to thinking about how we've put accountability in Rule 10. When we think about accreditation, accountability, and quality, we really are moving in that step. It's a matter of how do we think forward on some of those next steps, and then reinforcing, how do we really support those schools that are needing improvement, not just our priority schools, but for us, all of those schools that are needing improvement. Another session that we attended, we were fortunate that Secretary King from the US Department of Education was there, and his remarks, I think, resonated well because the transformation of what they're currently doing, and again, we don't know how long he will be in his position because of the transformation of whatever that may happen at the federal level, but the transformation at this point of the department because of ESSA is to really moving towards the department to be not about compliance, but a department that's about technical assistance and support, and how do they transform that type of organization to an organization that's a system of support. And I thought, well, that resonates well. We've been talking about that for over a year. So I think it really, as he highlighted some of the elements of ESSA, it really, again, puts that responsibility back onto us as we move forward. The other piece that was timely, and I'll just pass this out because this is a handout that was just hot off the press from NASB, and it's Take It Off the Consent Agenda is kind of how it's premised, and Nine Questions State Boards of Education Should Ask About State Assessment Systems. It really, NASB did a really nice job in framing some points of discussion that are very timely for us, even in this meeting today, and then as we move forward, to really think about what we're doing with assessment and the direction that we're moving. And one of those pieces that resonated well with me was the discussion around making sure that as you think about assessment, that it's doing more than a multiple choice test, that it's getting to higher-order thinking skills, critical thinking, problem-solving. And one of the other pieces was that it's timely for instruction and for parents, and if you can't get results back in a very short period of time, then you really need to question the value of that particular assessment so that it does truly have meaning for students and families and teachers. So I thought I would share that piece with you. And then I also attended the Central Regional Meeting that we had, and at that meeting, the discussion was moving towards doing more regional meetings. And so Arkansas is going to be doing a regional meeting, and then I would guess a year or so from now, there'll be discussion about how do we structure more opportunities for regional meetings similar to what we had last year? How do we do that across the state? The discussion was the importance of state board members having a chance to really network with one another, which we do at NASB, but not always within our region. So that was another highlight of NASB. From here, I think we'll have Molly give some highlights, and then we had a four-hour technical assistance meeting that was tied to the grant that Lilly mentioned earlier that we'll have Donlin update on, that Molly and I and Scott and Donlin participated in. So Molly, do you want to update on some of the sessions you attended?
I was fortunate because there were two national speakers. The first is Stephen Turnipseed. Kind of sounds funny, but he's Executive Vice President and Chief Strategy Officer of something called Destination Imagination, and he was the former Chair and Partnership for 21st Century Learning. He gave a slideshow, and it was very interesting because it went back to our discussions when we had fine arts standards, we passed those, and the social studies standards. He talked about himself being kind of a nerd when he was a little farming boy, and how he used to take things apart, and he said, you know, it's really important that we do stress science, technology, engineering, and math. He's an engineer. But he said it's the arts that are important, too, and the creativity, and that kind of brought into conversation about this 21st century learning. And it's all about employability. When we talk about our 11th graders taking a national test instead of our NESA, he was saying that when you are hired, the 21st century skills are like communication, collaboration, that you're able to think deeply and critically. These are not things you can always measure on a test. And of course, in our testing assessment sessions, we talked about how do you get at that deeper learning? But again, back to Stephen Turnipseed, he also was Executive Director of LEGOS, so that gives you some understanding that he loved, he loves inquisitive minds, and one thing he said that kind of shocked me, he said, when they do brain scans of kids, when they're in school from like 8 to 2, their brain scans kind of flatline. And he said, we need to make sure as we approach the future of education, we're engaging kids, and that we're not turning them off to what excites them, but have them be part of their learning and have their curiosity still part of that. So he was pretty awesome. And then if you're into teaching, Charlotte Danielson was there, and she spoke, and she talked about using your state teacher evaluation system to promote teaching and learning. So since we just had finished our report, it was very timely, and I want to tell you about her a little bit. Do you, have any of you other people met her? She came to Nebraska for some, a leadership meeting, and I think you were there. And she's, she is so approachable, you wouldn't know that she's, you know, the big wig, but she was just down, she's just down-to-earth and kind of fun. And she said, we should set the bar high. She said, we want the best and brightest to go into teaching, and we did have some conversations about how it isn't just recruiting new teachers, Jay, not just recruiting, but retaining those quality teachers. The problem has been, I think, with NCLB, in the end, there was such pressure on teachers, especially in some states, to teach to the test because their job evaluation was related to state testing. She said, if we want to really reinvigorate teaching, we have to do something as a state and do some brainstorming and then make some plans. She said there's right now a $7,500 scholarship for high school seniors to go into teaching. This is through educationimagine.org, and also certification for raiders. She said, one thing, when we're starting doing our teacher evaluation when it rolls out, make sure that there is PD, professional development, for the teachers who are doing the ratings, because unless there's across-the-board continuity, different raiders could do things in different ways. And so one of the things she's really into, and I wish Glenn was here, she talked about competency-based learning, and also about, about if you have students engage in creating student portfolios, we call them personalized learning plans here, she said, it all engages them in creating their own story. That's what it is. A personalized learning plan, if you can keep it in a portfolio, becomes your story to share with your grandkids and maybe your colleges and your possible careers. So, and it was such a kind of small group, we were able to go to reception and visit with them on a one-to-one also. I went to the student data privacy, and I did email you the student data privacy documents, and you have them in a digital folder. One thing that was talked about, we had excellent people that were, I mean, brainiac people, you can imagine, in the data privacy. Nebraska's doing it well. I want to congratulate you and Commissioner, your staff, because some, some states have got in so much into the security of information, they're not even able to leverage the data to improve instruction. So Nebraska, and Dean Volkers isn't here either, thank you, Dean, but Dean has worked with his staff to really create a system where this dashboard, as it flies out, I think our teachers are going to be able to access the data, we'll be able to protect student privacy, but we'll leverage the details to improve instruction and learn from what we're doing right, maybe what we're not doing so well. Then I also wanted to mention, I'll try to hurry to the end here, and this has to do with criminal justice reform. What does it mean for schools? I'll try to do this in a 90-second bullet point. Could probably spend all day on it. Could probably spend all day on this. One thing about it, Michael Leachman, he's Director of State Fiscal Research, Center of Budget and Policy Priorities. He said that we need to make sure that our homeless kids, our kids at risk, sometimes our foster kids, sometimes the migrant kids that come in and out, sometimes they get entangled in criminal justice. And those kids are human resources. Have you ever talked to a superintendent or a school board member and they say, oh, those kids, they hurt our NESA scores? He was saying, I talked to him afterwards, too, and he said, instead of trying to push them out of your district, we have to find ways to leverage instruction for these at-risk kids. And Commissioner, I challenge you to, these wraparound services for our at-risk youth, I think I hear at my local school boards talking about social-emotional supports for all kids, but particularly these at-risk kids. When Jolene Palmer and our whole group was talking about success and access, these at-risk kids are going to need the social-emotional supports early, or they end up being the people in that pipeline, too, sometimes in the pipeline to prison. And I'll just share one little detail with you. Do you know that if you have a student expelled from school, statistically, they're more apt to become a felon? And if you become labeled, it's harder to get jobs. And if you're out of school, this is a no-to-hope, Commissioner. When we do our personalized learning plans, they were talking about digital backpacks that follow the student. So if I am a student who's mobile, whether it's poverty, or foster, or adjudication, your learning plan goes with you. So I'm sure Nebraska's right on a digital backpack, but I have resources for that as well. And then Every Student Succeeds Act, Technical Assistance, I was at that act, too, and we, I mean, that four-hour, and we were on top of a train track, I think, or a metro station that started reverberating as we were there. So Donlin, that's you.
Okay, thank you. Just a little side note before I start. Both Mr. Turnipseed and Dr. King talked about how public schools basically save their lives. Mr. Turnipseed, as a youngster, well, he still has Tourette's, but he had a very forward-thinking teacher that made sure that all the kids around him understood, you know, that doesn't make him different. And because of her intervention, really helped kids accept him, so he didn't ever really feel, you know, like he was different. And he also had a public teacher that said, you're really, like Molly said, really good in science and math, you should think about doing this science fair. And he won the science fair, and so the rest was history. And then Dr. King, if you know, Secretary King, if you know his background, he lost both his parents by the time he was 12. And he said, if it hadn't been for public school teachers, he wouldn't be here today. So I just thought that was kind of cool, to see people really succeed in big ways with coming from a lot of different backgrounds. So the last afternoon was basically an in-depth session on the new ESSA. And the grant paid for, helped to support four of us to attend, and so a part of that was to attend that afternoon, which we were really glad we did at the end of the afternoon. They really chunked out the different big pieces of ESSA, and they started each section with asking us to kind of share our state's vision with our tablemates around assessment, accountability, professional development, and teacher preparation, or teacher evaluation, highly qualified teachers. And then be thinking of two questions, and then they would go into depth about what is the latest happenings with ESSA around each of those areas. The Federal Department of Education is in the process of negotiated rulemaking. As you know, when anything, big legislation like that is passed, the next big piece are the regulations that come down. And so they kind of, both Secretary King and we had an undersecretary also that was with us that afternoon, shared the timelines for how things are expected to roll out with both the regulations and the rulemaking. And then when our state plans will be due early next year, and then over the process of several more months, so the changes will not probably take place in schools until the 17, 18 school year. But it really gives you as board members and us as a state of Nebraska time to think about these pieces and be thinking about what's best for our students. There were so many times we looked at each other when we learned about things that are happening and went, we're right on. I mean, we have done things the right way, I think, already. I think we're poised to be really successful as we create our new state plan. I just have a couple of slides with the grant, so I don't know, Drew, if you can click those on. But the timing really couldn't be better for you as policymakers. This grant is just one piece that talks about, you know, we got this grant last fall to help us align standards as the various, as we do various things, making sure everything's aligned to standards. It's on, on here. So it's a two-year grant for $30,000. We had our first meeting in March, and like Lilly said, our national, our representative from NASB came and helped us facilitate the meeting. But the thing that's most exciting to me is as you go forward as a board with your strategic planning, and you overlay that with ESSA and AQuest, having just redone our standards, you really have an opportunity as a board to kind of almost create this tapestry and make sure that it's aligned every which direction. So I think that's, that's going to be really exciting as we go forward. We will have some dollars through this grant to be able to have some listening sessions around the state. And Glenn and Lilly are our board members on the alignment grant. So we're just, I think the timing couldn't be better for us to do this. Basically, it just shows how the learning standards can be at the center of everything, but you actually could put in that center, you could put every one of the AQuest tenants in there. You could put in college and career, is what's in this model, but you could put in assessments, you could put in transitions. And you could say, how are we aligned with curriculum, with materials, with the accountability system, with professional development? So I think this will be a nice tool that they basically are building for us around this grant. But I think you as board members could say, we're going to look at this tool for everything that we do and make sure that we're aligned back and forth throughout the entire process, you know, to really create some great capacity building and leadership around the state. So it was a good first meeting, and I think it's, like I said, we got it at the right time, so.
And I would like to add that I think one of the things that, blessings in disguise, I think putting together the waiver application was probably a good process for us to gather information. Not getting the waiver was a really good thing for us, for those states that really do have a lot of unwinding to do. We are very fortunate that we don't have to do some of that unwinding. We can really do more development and growing, which I think is very positive, so. Any questions? Maureen?
I just wanted to add a piece to what Lilly was referring to earlier about the early childhood education. The ESU9 Board Meeting that I attended three weeks ago all dealt with having to deal with reduction in force. They're losing, I believe, I don't quote me on this number, but close to seven to nine employees because some of the schools are pulling out on the Life Skills Program and the 18-plus. But the following year, 1718, schools that have contracted with ESU9 are pulling out to form their own early childhood education programs in their own schools. And so there will be another nine or 10, if not more, early childhood teachers from there that will be finding other jobs outside, which, you know, is a great thing for the school districts and for the children because the school districts are taking their own programs. But at the same time, difficult for these teachers wondering if they're going to be finding their jobs. So, you know, early childhood is on the rise and a very positive thing for us. So, you know, in one direction, it's really good, in the other direction, it's, you know, for those great teachers. And the school districts that have been working with these teachers are grabbing them up because they are that good, they want them.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Donlin. We'll move on to Item 2, discuss requests for meeting attendants. In your documents for this meeting, you've got the requests for upcoming meetings and activities. There's also a few that were requested and approved last month. Do make sure you get in any requests to Laura, so tomorrow we have an updated list if there is anything that you are aware of, that you're planning on attending, in particularly between, you know, now and our May meeting or even our June meeting. So be thinking about those items. Yes?
Do you, are you encouraging us to attend the AQuest Data Conference?
Well, I will tell you that that's really each of your, each of our board members prerogative to attend. My personal view, I think if you go online and look at the information, it's really very powerful, some of the things that are happening with AQuest. AQuest is certainly going to drive many of the things that we do. So I think you as individual board members need to determine if it's a place you should learn and listen. I think that, again, is an individual board decision, but it, in my view, is a very important statewide meeting that's hosted by the Department of Education. Commissioner, is there?
Yeah, what was the date of that?
It's the 18th.
18th and 19th.
18th and 19th.
Yeah, I would tell you, and I think you'll see it throughout the course of the conversation today, a lot of the information that we've gathered influences what's happening at the AQuest Conference and the importance of that information. But it's really an opportunity also for us to hear from our important stakeholders, especially our schools and practitioners across the state. And, you know, I'm pretty sure that even though we're giving a lot of presentations, we will learn far more from the interaction overall. And so that's where this has become a very valuable and important part of our routine each year, is this, it has been historically our data conference, but this focus on AQuest is giving us even more intentional focus. It's in Kearney, actually. It's in Kearney at the UNICEF. There's a great speaker there, too.
Well, a grain of salt on some speakers. Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll move on to Item 3. Item 3 is our monthly board travel expense report. You do have that in your information as well. Are there any questions or comments about the monthly expense report? If not, we'll move on to Item 3, Commissioner's Report and Agenda Overview. Commissioner, item one, two, three?
I'll try to go, actually, fairly quickly, but I do, I don't think we got a formal welcome for Drew Werster, who's working the, you got to see him, though. And so thanks, Drew, for joining us. I will tell you a real quick thank you just to our staff that go to, you know, to great lengths to make sure that everything's functioning and working, and most of the time it does, right? And so, but they are here, obviously, working hard. I'll tell you, we even had a technical breakdown between the last meeting and this, that they actually replaced a lot of the technical equipment. And thanks to NET and the staff that came over to actually service that, and our staff that did that work. But I just kind of want to make that point while I get to introduce Drew, too. So thanks, Drew, for joining us. Consent agenda process, pretty simple, right? So if you have any questions or have any items that you would like to pull off, there's a pink form that you have in your materials. Get that to Margaret. If you do have any other questions, we can organize staff certainly to get that for you and let me know as quick as possible, and I'll work on that. The report on rules, you'll see attached to that second item there. The only thing they have formally on there is the Rule 4 hearing, which is coming up on textbook loan process. And just so you know, I've had a great meeting with the Nebraska Catholic Conference folks and representatives from those schools. And we'll have the hearing process in multiple locations, and I think I've got them here, Scottsbluff, Kearney, in Omaha, and as well as right here in this location. I will also have a kind of a follow-up meeting with some of the stakeholders that have been involved in that for kind of a debrief on what we hear about the hearing, so we can keep that process moving forward appropriately. So just wanted you to know that. And then I'm going to, Item 3.3 is really an update, too, and I didn't know the best place to put this, but I, there's an attached kind of executive summary of the lottery innovation grants. As we watched the legislative process, last year, the legislature passed this grant program, we kind of had to watch this year to know for sure whether or not those lottery funds would actually be there still. By the end of this particular session, it looks like that will be the case. And there's just an executive summary that gives you a little bit of an outline. One of the things within the outline that I want to highlight, you know, we're looking at what those conditions are that schools would have to offer an application for that grant and how we would make that selection. There's several different key items there, but one of those key items certainly serving high-need students, serving needs improvement schools underneath our AQuest classification, aligned with the department's AQuest tenants, and leveraging technology. And so thinking about big system investments and thinking about that and kind of having some buckets of work. And so we've had staff working on this and others, kind of forming perhaps a little more intentional grant-making process around this particular lottery grant-funded source. We'll bring that back in May with the full kind of plan, so you have that there, but we'll have a process in which we do that. There's actually just one more, there's another grant element for extended learning opportunities that have been put into this year's budget and signed by the governor around extended learning opportunities, which is a small one-year process for $250,000. We're trying to merge those two concepts together, at least on how we go about making these grants. So they're very purposeful and intentional about building the system and supporting ultimately things that the board feels is important. So I just share that with you, so you can take a look at that. More details will come in May. Did I miss anything?
Nope, I think that was it. Commissioner, and then I think, Donlin, you're going to be reporting later on on strategic planning, is that correct?
Yeah, I think we can.
Yes, later?
We have Sharon and Pat here.
Yep, okay. So we'll move on to Sharon and Pat.
One thing I will mention is the slides I just showed are on your e-meetings under this item, if you want to look at those.
Thank you.
So I, yeah, so having Sharon and Pat, normally I'd have Donlin come up, but since she came up on the NASB piece, I wanted to make sure we had an opportunity to kind of make you aware of, well, I'll let Sharon and Pat kind of dive into it, but making you aware that we have to select a state board representative for the NCTE group, so.
Good afternoon, I'm Sharon Cott, and this is Pat Madsen. We work with the Nebraska Council on Teacher Education. Just a very brief reminder that the NCTE is the state board's advisory board to guide your decisions on teacher certification, teacher preparation, the endorsements that go on certificates, and the other processes that surround educator preparation. Several years ago, it was determined that the state board would want to have two representatives, two that were specifically selected by the state board, and along with that, an individual who would serve as an alternate in the event that one or the other of those representatives could not participate. And they wanted those individuals to be teachers selected by the board. You currently have one person on, Deborah Fries, whose term expires in a couple of years. You also have the alternate, Mary Kay Hahn, who has indicated that she was not interested in being selected as a person to move into the regular position. So we are coming to the board to ask you to think about an individual who would represent the board as the board-appointed NCTE representative, to ask that individual to submit an application. The application materials are attached to your board support materials. We would like those applications in here by April 22nd, so that we can prepare a list so that in May, you can take a look at the individuals who've been submitted and make a decision about the individual to represent you. We encourage you to be out there and get that person to step forward and to participate in three meetings a year held here in Lincoln. Expenses reimbursed. It can be a rather lively discussion. And we want those perspectives represented, as you know, and then I will stop. There are three, essentially, three groups represented on the Nebraska Council on Teacher Education. The Institutions for Higher Education, each have a representative. There's an equal number of teachers, of which your board folks contribute to. And then a group of what we'll call the Governance and Oversight folks, such as Human Relations and Administrators. Do you have any questions for Pat or I?
Pat, and then John, okay.
Do you have a particular area of the state that you need?
Do you have a particular area of the state that you need representation?
We, we would encourage the Board to be thoughtful about that. Mary Kay Hahn is out of the Gearing area right now. And Deb Fries comes from the Grand, Norfolk area. We try to be intentional about that. And Jay helps us with teacher representation and is thoughtful about that, as well as considering geographical areas. So if, if certain representations are not made by Board selection, many times how he fills that in is, helps us to take care of that as well.
Thank you, Sharon. I'm already working with my school districts in regards to preparing nominations. One school district had this question, can they nominate more than one person?
They can nominate 253 people if they want.
I'm not sure if they have that many.
But the answer to that question ultimately comes down to, the Board will need to select among, from among the applications that we receive. So to the extent that you narrow it down before it comes to the Board, it may help the Board's decision be a bit easier. But we, we are not restricting the number of applications that can be made.
Speaking of restrictions, you say this basically holds for teachers only? How about administrators that have vast experiences in teaching?
The, the position and the organizational policies essentially specify a teacher.
There is, I think, and thank you for sharing all the information, because there, there is quite a bit of broad representation on the council from other areas as well. So there, there is quite a few administrator representatives, teacher prep and so.
And included in your support materials, it isn't pretty colored like mine is, but there is a list of individuals who are currently on the council and their expiration dates. Their expiration dates. Their terms. Cool.
Power.
Yes, Ollie. So if it is a current teacher in one of the public schools, they have to make sure, as John is probably doing, is that they have to have the endorsement from their administration, I would think, to apply for it, because they'll have a sub coming in on the days they would attend these meetings. So there's more to it than just coming to a meeting. They have to cover and make arrangements for their school.
Yes, it, the school really does have to be supportive of them representing their school, as well as the teachers of the state.
Remind me, were the dates of the meetings in the online information?
They were not actually provided, however it is, online, a meeting in October, a meeting in March, and a meeting in June.
So it's typically two days. Which could very well impact somebody, because they ought to not apply if they're not going to attend all the meetings.
Okay.
It, it specifies in the organizational policies, representing practicing teachers, representing practicing teachers.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Sharon. Thank you, Pat. Next, we'll move on to item four, Discussion of Action Items. Our first item is to discuss proposed revisions to State Board Policy B-12, Public Participation in Board Meetings. Pat?
Yes. We discussed this last month and are bringing a recommendation that B-12 be adopted tomorrow with the following changes. It centers primarily around when citizens can make a request for an appearance and the dates, so that it meets with our agenda and also with the time that it takes staff to, to set these things up. It, it will, a student, a citizen may request a 10-minute special appearance before the Board to take place on the first or second day of a regular meeting, except when the Board declares itself to be an executive session. And we have also added that requests must be made in writing and received no later than 5:00 PM Central Time at least four days in, prior to the first day of the meeting. And these requests may be granted or denied at the sole discretion of the Commissioner. We have had times that, that because of our schedule, we felt that, that we weren't able to take some of those requests. And they, if they are denied for the special appearance, there is also a time to speak during the public comment period. So that'll be put up for tomorrow. And we do recommend that you accept the adoption of, of the changes that have been made.
Any questions or comments? John?
Speaking of point of clarification, Pat, can you help me out with the last change, if you will? The Chair appoint clarification regards to Speaker's comments, the very last change, next page.
Request for special appearances may be granted or denied, is the last change that I have.
Board member may request of-
Oh, excuse me.
Yeah.
A board member may request of the Chair a point of clarification in regards to a Speaker's comments. We have talked about, it, it's a chance for the public to speak and give their opinion, but it may not be an agenda item, as far as we are concerned. And we, we need to be careful about that.
Thank you.
Getting into a discussion that is not on our agenda. But a point of clarification is okay. But to actually get into discussion about what they're wanting us to, to comment on, we can't do that, because it's not, it may not be an agenda item.
So this is not going to be an engaged discussion? And if it turns out as such, the Chairperson will, if you will, take action?
Yes.
Right, and it starts as a point of clarification to the Chair. So the Chair makes the decision if, if it's even an appropriate point of clarification.
Yes.
As part of the process, is what we did discuss.
Thank you.
We also discussed, we don't know if it will be necessary very often.
No.
We had quite a bit of discussion at that, so hopefully that doesn't set a different direction. Any other questions or comments on item one? If not, we'll move on to item two, Discuss Proposed Revisions to State Board Policy B-19, Staff Research and Assistance. Pat, please continue.
Thank you. Saying the same in regards to Board members requesting research or assistance. There are some guidelines as to how long you can expect staff to work on something and their written response and so on. The only thing that has changed here is that at the very last sentence, the Commissioner shall provide reports to the full Board of the requests made of staff, and that has been deleted. That's up to the Commissioner, and that's between he and the Board member.
Any questions?
And we recommend that for adoption tomorrow as well.
Thank you, Pat. We will move on to item three, Grant the Commissioner Approval to Contract for Classification and Compensation Consultant Services for an Amount Up to $115,000. Joel Scherling, hello, Joel.
Hello, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. So the last major class and comp study that the department engaged in was, that resulted in a major shift in the class and comp structure for the department was done in 2001, too. So it's been some time ago. Since then, we've collected market data every two years for bargaining purposes, and we've tweaked the classifications, which is part of our classification system throughout those years. But we really haven't had a very thorough overview or, or look at the whole thing. So we're way overdue for this kind of thing. So it's a best practice, HR best practice, to engage regularly to do a periodic review of our classification structure, which looks at things like, do we have the right job families? Has the work shifted? Do we need to update the language in those classification specifications? Do we have the right number of levels? So for example, we have an office associate job family, there are four levels. Do we really need four? So that system was predicated on the best practices at that point in time. We have a feeling there will be some things that we will, we would want to change. On the compensation side, of course, we're taking a look at market data to evaluate whether our salaries are competitive. And we'll take a look at not only, since we're a constitutional agency, other state agencies, what they're paying, how that relates to what we're doing. And we'll also take a look at other comparators to see how we're faring with other adjoining states and that kind of thing for like jobs. So we'll also be taking a look at our position descriptions and making sure that those are all up to date, because those are basis for a lot of things that we do in HR, whether it's performance appraisals or posting a position or succession planning, those kind of things. So that is part of the proposed scope of, of work as well. So we hope we won't need to spend all up to the 115. That was sort of a guess at what the proposals might come in at. And so depending upon the final scope of work, it might be less than that. The work would cross two fiscal years. So we would start as soon as we would have a contract signed. And then the work would continue on into the next fiscal year. So we would be able to split those costs between two fiscal years, which would help the budget a little bit. So that's a quick overview of, of why we're doing it.
Any questions?
We're gonna issue an RFP on this?
We did issue an RFP.
If we had any, is, are the responses back? Do we have a, do we have a number of bidders or?
We did have five people respond. And we're at the point now where we've invited two vendors to talk with us more in-depth about their proposals. So we haven't made a final selection yet.
Okay, and have we worked with any of those vendors before? Do you know?
I want to say no, the Department of Education has not in this specific circumstance. I think one of the vendors has been used for some other purposes in the past.
And does the, does the effort go beyond just trying to class, you know, look at the, the, the job positions? Is it, does it go beyond saying, you know, we've got somebody doing a job that doesn't need to exist anymore? Is it, is that, does that go beyond the concept of what you're looking at?
That probably does. So we're taking a look not at the incumbents, but rather the positions.
Just the positions?
Yeah. So I would argue no, that wouldn't, it wouldn't affect an, an individual incumbent in a specific position.
I guess my personal attitude is it'd be nice to do that as well at some point. But I think what you're doing is probably very important and appropriate if it hasn't been done in that many years and it's just a good business practice.
Any other comments? Commissioner?
Yeah.
We'll let you comment.
Sure, I know.
Sure.
Well, first of all, thanks to Joel for his efforts on this. I think as we start to look at the environment that state government's working in, by the way, Joel's done a lot of work with state personnel and having conversations in that arena. As an agency, that's a non-code agency, we have to pair up and do this work on our own, whether it's the bargaining agreement or other things. And so we carry those certain responsibilities. And so this information truly is quite important for us, both for the future of the organization from a standpoint of making sure we're at least competitive relative to how we're paying and thinking about positions. But I think to Patrick's point, obviously going about, thinking about the organization and what our future work is, is also very important. But this is, this is a key, key piece of data for us moving forward, so, thanks, Joel.
Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item four, Discuss Proposed Revisions to Rule 81. 92 NEC 81, Rules and Regulations for the High School Equivalency Program. Vicky and no Sharon, it looks like.
Well, I was gonna say, she must have deserted me this afternoon.
Well, that's all right, Vicky. You can carry it.
I'll try. Well, good afternoon, I'm Vicky Bauer with the Adult Education Section at NDE. I'm here to request the adoption of the proposed revisions to Rule 81, Rules and Regulations for the High School Equivalency Program. Since 2014, the GED test is computerized. And since the test is computerized, GED Testing Service is able to analyze test taker's performance on a continuous basis. And after collecting and analyzing data for approximately 18 months and the outcomes that the examines have, GED Testing Service did announce the recalibration for the GED testing scores to bring the passing score from 150 down to 145. And it's not unusual for standardized tests to make recalibration determinations. And I have come before you in years past with the same proposal. It still measures the educational outcomes of graduating high school seniors of today. I know you all have the rule, the changes to Rule 81 in front of you, and I'd be happy to go over it with you. Or I know you guys can read, so if you had any questions from reading through it, I'd be happy to answer them. I would like to say that there's approximately 150 Nebraskans that are anxiously waiting for this rule change. And I get multiple calls every single day on when is this going to become rule. So I have explained this week that it's before you today and tomorrow. And, and I voiced my anticipation that all will go well today and tomorrow. And then it will move across the street rather quickly.
We'll start with John, who has questions or comments. John?
Thank you very much. I've had the opportunity to work with many of the champions for the GED programs, whether it be mentors, teachers, if you will, parents. And with this change, it is going to allow over 150 of our citizens, if you will, who maybe a while back did not make the grade. Because of the change, they did make the grade, and they're all excited about earning their GED. And with that, as she stated, there's been many, many, if you will, calls of concerns going, hey, when do we get our GED? And apparently, we have to explain the process of the hearing, the Attorney General and the Governor's signature. But they are waiting for their celebrations. Thank you very much.
And so that they can go on to further education. Some of them are waiting to go to college, some of them are waiting to get a job or a job advancement. So it is very important to the individuals.
Any other questions or comments?
And I might say, GED Testing Service is just waiting for the word. And the day that happens, they have all the letters ready to go out to the individuals, congratulating them on passing. And then we'll be more than ready to issue diplomas and transcripts. So we're really excited.
All right. I think that's it, so thank you, Vicky.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to item five. And item five is to discuss provisional approval for Bellevue University to become an approved teacher preparation program. Sharon Cott. Hello again.
Just kind of jumping from one thing to another to another here. You have a variety of support materials that relate to the approval of Bellevue University. This doesn't happen very often. We have 16 teacher preparation programs approved in the state. Bellevue University would become the 17th. Our last approval was in 2001, and that was Grace University. And Grace University went through a similar process that's outlined in our current Rule 20, related to the steps that an institution must go through to show their fitness for being approved by the Nebraska State Board as an approved teacher preparation program. This was initiated with an application submitted by Bellevue University. And that was subsequently reviewed by a team. And I will say, I, you know, you don't always get your first pick on the very best people to constitute a team, but I got my very first pick. And that included Jay Sears from NSCA. It included an individual from Bellevue Public Schools, from the Human Resources Department. It included an individual from Grace University who'd been through the process recently. It included a representative from the Nebraska Association for Councils of, Nebraska Association of Colleges of Teacher Education, who also happened to be a state college person. And then two additional individuals from smaller private schools who could understand the potential and the expectations that Bellevue is moving forward with. So it was a very, it was a very good onsite visit in addition to the offsite work that we did in reviewing the materials. we did in reviewing the materials. Report was submitted to the commissioner, who in turn authorized us to move forward to you folks. And tomorrow, you will be asked to grant provisional approval to Bellevue University to move forward to implement their plan. This will generally take two to three years. We anticipate that by fall, they'll come back in with a report on their progress, spring of 2017. Depending upon the results of that, they may be able to admit candidates in fall of 2017. And that then, if all goes well, the reporting processes and everything goes fine, they would be officially able to place candidates in student teaching by fall of 2018. Now, that may seem to some to be long and drawn out, but I will guarantee you that there are lots of things that many of us will miss as far as what needs to be put into place in order to ensure that Nebraska children have the best teachers possible. And we're not gonna miss a beat on that. We will be fair, we will be thorough, and we will be compliant with laws as we move forward with this. So, do you have any questions for me?
John?
Just a quick statement, I did not realize the investment of time and resources that a college or university, if you will, takes to start a journey like this and to finish it. It was just incredible, the investment they're gonna make. Thank you.
Thank you for being there. It was great to be able to have a board member to witness that this isn't just, let's wake up one morning and create a new teacher preparation program.
Any other questions for Sharon? Thank you very much, Sharon.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to item six, discuss a subgrant from the Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services for use of Child Care Development Grant Quality Funds. Melody, good afternoon, Melody.
Good afternoon. As you said, I am Melody Hobson, I'm the administrator of the Office of Early Childhood. And some of you who've been on the board for a while have seen me here before with this type of, of an item. We work with Nebraska Health and Human Services very, very closely. The Quality Child Care Act requires both agencies to kind of plan together and to, and to work specifically with the Child Care and Development Block Grant. And when the Child Care and Development Block Grant comes into the state, it's what the majority of the funds go to, to pay for childcare subsidy for fam, low-income families who need childcare so that they can work or go to school. But with that, there, there is kind of a set aside for quality, and there are several different funds that, that are set aside for different purposes. And Department of Education, Office of Early Childhood, has always done much of the work for, of the quality work. The Block Grant is one of the sources of revenue to keep the Early Childhood Training Center working with, creating trainings. We do resource and referral for families who need help finding childcare out of there. We have a media center that is a free loan center for childcare providers or parents. We have childcare providers, we have, we have school district staff, we have Head Start people who can access an online kind of inventory of either electronic media or books for, either for their staff or for them individually. They can check it out free of charge, and then they just have to get it back to us. And so, we do a lot of things. We also create trainings. Anyway, so, all of that requires an agreement for all of the, the funds to do the things that the funds are supposed to be doing. And so, we, with, with the Department of Health and Human Services and some personnel changes, and some changes with the feds, it has taken a little longer to get this one to you than we had hoped, but there are multiple years for obligation of funds and liquidation of funds. So, this is the agreement for the 2014 money. I hope to be to you in the next couple of months for the 15 money, but it is, this is, this is something that, it's like 1.8 million dollars that would, that comes to the department. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions, Melody?
I'm just gonna offer one quick thought. And first of all, thanks, Melody, for your work on this. I know that in the transition with a lot of staff at HHS, this took a considerable amount of time. On their part, they were very good to spend time with us. Shane from our office, there's probably other people to thank, but it was a lot of work, and it really, I think, set clear expectations in the relationship as we're going forward. So, I thank you for those efforts.
All right. Melody, if you want to just continue on with item seven, discuss contract with Branagh.
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 I think it's actually Brown Information Group, which BIG is not the best acronym, I'm sorry. What, what we do, and you've heard me talk about this a lot, we have, we use the Early Childhood Environment Rating Scales, the whole family scales, the infant toddler environment rating scales, the family childcare rating scale. And we have invested a significant amount of money in training so that we have people who are reliable with the authors. We have an anchor system now, we use them a lot with, I mean, that is the program improvement tool that we use for our, for our school districts, it's a part of Results Matter. It is also written into, as one of the choices for, for childcare providers, school districts, and Head Start programs who want to be a part of Step Up to Quality. So, along with that, Branagh has an exclusive agreement with the Environment Rating Scales people to, to automate the scoring system. Right now, we have observers who go out, they do their observations, and then they take their, their, their photocopy, you know, protocols, and they, you know, they, they score each individual indicator, they write their notes all over the, all over the page, and then they have to go, you know, then they calculate. And it's amazing how, you know, counting to 15 sometimes can be a problem when you're in a classroom and, and filling out your stuff. So, Branagh has a, a system that a lot of different states have been using, and they speak very, very highly of it. It is a significant investment. So, we wanted to see whether or not it would save us in time for our observers, because the, doing the, the report afterwards, it takes several hours. We want to know if it would, if it would cut down on the time that we're spending on, on observers, doing all of that by hand, if it will significantly increase the, the accuracy of the reports, because like I said, when you're, when you're adding these things up, sometimes they don't add up, and eventually, and sometimes we do find mistakes. And it's, it is what it is. And so, we would like to pilot this system. We would pilot with two internal staff, and then with, probably with our anchor that we have, who is, who is external to the department but under contract to, you know, with us. We would probably do this, we would do this, well, for no more than a year. But we would like to see, you know, does it do a better job than we can do by hand? Will it save us any money in the long run? Will it improve our accuracy enough to, to, to try to pursue this for all of our observers? That's something that we think is, is important to know. We've heard wonderful things about it from other states, but that's not really enough for us to decide that, oh yeah, we wanna go whole hog on this. So, do you have any questions?
Any questions?
So, other states are using this now?
Yes.
Okay. Are there other firms that offer a similar product?
Not for the Environment Rating Scales. That's, I wish there were so that there were a little bit of competition, but they have, they have an exclusive agreement with the, the authors of the scale.
How many other states are using it?
I don't know exactly. I know, I, I didn't count, I know North Carolina, who, that they've used it for probably eight or 10 years. Most of the states that have quality rating improvement system, who do this, with some who have, you know, 100 to 200 or 300 observations a year, they use this. And I can get you the exact number, but I didn't even think to, to look.
I guess I just, you know, when you start talking piloting.
Yeah.
That word makes me a little nervous.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? If not, do you want to stay?
Yes, I do.
And now, discuss awards for new and expansion early childhood education program.
And I'd like for, for you to meet Christine Looby. Christine is an early childhood specialist in the Office of Early Childhood. She's also our grants manager. She is taking on those duties from Linda Myers, which I think some of you have, have met before. And so, she's thrilled to do that. But, no, I, of course she is. Anyway, so, we wanted to, you know, every year, we, we come to you with this, this list of, of programs that we were lucky enough to be able to fund. We had a number of applicants. This year, we had to, we didn't have enough money to fund four applications. So, we have 13 that we're proposing for funding. Of that, we have, let me get the right thing here, I have too many things in a row. We have, right here, probably, nine that are expansion grants, meaning that they already have an early childhood program, and they just want to be able to add some new classes and more kids. Four are completely new, and some of them are in very small places. And this is the, really the last year that we've had, you know, a couple of years ago, we had that extra appropriation of funds. And so, two years ago, we could fund, we could fund all the applications. And then we held some money over for, for last year. We funded quite a few last year. This year, we had enough for, for 13 programs. We had, you know, not, some of this was the appropriation, some of this was just the normal rollover of funds for state aid. But I think we've had an, you know, an absolutely great response to the RFP. We have a combination of full-day and part-day programs. Not, not every place is a full-day program appropriate, not every place is a part-day program appropriate. We did negotiate with three different programs so that we could fund more. We, we've had to negotiate with some of the, the larger programs and say, can you do maybe just a few less classrooms? Or if there was an expansion grant, and they were going to like, like two classrooms per day, one in the morning and one in the afternoon, and they already had a lot of stuff, maybe they could get by with less startup money. So, we tried to do our best to make the dollars go as far as they'll go. But we'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions? Pat?
Not a question, but just a statement. You all know how supportive I am of this program. However, tomorrow, I will abstain because Beatrice's Prevention Fund that just want to make sure that no one thinks that it's conflict. I will abstain, I'm extremely supportive.
Thank you very much, and it was nice to meet you. Welcome. Next, we'll move on to item nine, discuss approval of the non-public schools. Frida, we have our 2016-17 list of schools. Thank you.
Thank you. These are the items I like to bring forward. It's kind of the culmination of everything that we do, and really, a lot of the work that you are doing, it comes together in this. And so, tomorrow, we are going to ask you to grant the commissioner the authority to, to approve this list of schools to operate in the 2016-17 school year in accordance with Rule 14, which is the approval rule, and applies to our non-public schools. And I'm sure you've probably looked at the list of schools that we have there, and it may be that you see some are missing from schools that you know. In fact, there are 80 that are missing from this list of approved schools, just pure and simply because they have elected to be accredited. So, they will be brought forward to you in June for permission to operate in the 2016-17 school year. And some of you, I know, are very familiar with the process and the fact that at the beginning of every school year, every system will submit a statement of assurance saying they are meeting all the, the regulations in Rule 14. But in addition to that, we will randomly go out to, and in this case of the, you can see there's 111 systems that are listed on the list. And we have visited, at this point in time, 20 this year. We try to get to all of them, you know, over a span of seven years or so, so that we can also confirm that what they are reporting is accurate. And at the same time, those visits also ask, you know, what are your needs? What are you seeing as being challenges? Or what is working well for you? So that we can keep Rule 14 as, what, the best to work with as possible. So, anyway, we have, all of these schools have met the requirements, and so, tomorrow, we will be asking you to approve them to operate in the next school year.
Any questions? Thank you, Frida.
Okay.
Very much. We are going to take a break. Okay. The State Board of Education will now reconvene, four minutes later than planned. Yes, yes, many of us were delinquent in getting back. Next, we're moving on to item five, committee reports and other items for discussion. And this, we're really turning it over to the commissioner for items. One, AQuest. Two, teaching and learning reports. Three, student success and access reports. Four, data. I think data and continuous improvement is also included in this kind of presentation, so we will turn it over to you, Commissioner.
All right. And we'll go ahead and use the, the slides, just to kind of, another quick thing, and I know each of you, from a tenant or domain perspective, maybe have some updates. And so, just given the, the routine that we normally have, I'll, I'll, I'll cue you in, I guess, relative to the, to when I'll need you to, to speak about that. It's really quite important and, and I think a great opportunity right now to review a little bit about what AQuest is about for the general sense of kind of grounding us and why we're doing this work, and where we've been to a certain extent, and where we're really trying to go. So, this is a bit in preparation for, we have some, a big event with the AQuest Conference, as we talked about a little bit earlier, and thinking about some of the key work that we have ahead of us across all of the different tenants. And so, we, we kind of coined this as a, you know, we have AQuest, every student, every day. I think for the data conference, I'm, I forget, continuing to improve with data or something to that extent, but I thought mapping the future seemed quite appropriate, that we start to talk about what's this roadmap really look like for us. And so, I'll go through a, an overview of that. These are actually slides, by the way, that we've used before in different settings and had conversations about them, but I think, again, to kind of ground us, we know that AQuest is really designed as a next-generation accountability system, that we've set this path to go far beyond, kind of past accountability and think beyond assessment, beyond the student performance as sole measures. And to get us really focusing on the investments that we think are critical for us in the future, really wanting our theory of action, right? That we understand that not just a system that describes what's happening, but actually gives us information to act on. And for some reason, I think when you look around that, you can't do that on singular measure. So, we know that it has to be about, about what happens across schools and a lot of different functions, a lot of different things. And obviously, our six tenants in AQuest are, are part of that. Really thinking about a system that is a shared sense of accountability is, is very important to us, a big conversation, I think, for the board over the last two years, and certainly near and dear to my heart, that we think about our responsibilities, the board's responsibilities, the commissioner's responsibilities, the agency's responsibilities. And then we talk about that in a partnership with our schools. And it's been so fast-paced, that sometimes hard, that folks sometimes don't hear every piece of that message. And so, I think it's worth repeating here that that's what we're about. We really want to focus on growth and improvement, that, that the continuous improvement processes are actually very, very important to us, that we think about how that works, not just, obviously, in traditional assessment results that we're seeing growth, but actually in our practices, that we see improvement and growth in, in the practices that happen across schools. And that ultimately, we're working in collaboration and, and supporting to improve the whole system. When we say accountability for today and tomorrow, and for this, this notion that we really are trying to be thinking about the future, we know that we have this kind of new era, an opportunity for the state board. Part of that, by the way, part of that's ESSA, part of that's the reauthorization of, of what's happened at a federal level. But there really are, are students in our, our state, in that we're taking But there really are, are students in our, our state, in that we're taking that responsibility quite seriously, and that we, in the design of the accountability system and in the design of our support systems with, that we're able to do that. And that we do our work, that you do your work relative to aligning policy in the direction for, for us as an agency, and that we're, we're thoughtful about our various responsibilities and compliance and regulation and other things. But we also think about how we use those as opportunities to provide support and alignment, again, for the system that, that makes that possible for a true accountability in, in the spirit of what we've done under AQuest. We, we know that it's beyond just accountability, and we've linked, we've done something unique. We've, we've pulled elements together, I think of accountability assessment, accreditation, and what we're doing in school improvement. It's been actually quite important to us that we tie those systems together, and that's, that's hard work, actually. It's hard work to think about the connections between all those pieces. But developing that really gives us this system approach that, that we've talked about for the last couple of years, and I, I find that really important. And then really putting ourselves in a position where we, we've talked about that in AQuest, that you are part of something. That was a bit of our theme last year, starting with Administrator Days, but it's really about the collective efforts of communities, administrators, teachers, across the whole process, that we think about how we do that efficiently and effectively and communicate with one another and make the best use of resources ultimately, too. So just imagine, and this comes from a slide, and I think a slide of a presentation that we, we tried to lay this out in front of other groups about just trying to think about that future. But imagine if we do get the system in, completely in place, that we really have more time for teaching and learning, that we reduce the amount of, of kind of burden, so to say, in, in reporting and other things, and, and even in our assessment time, that we spend less time ultimately on reporting, that we get this chance to be focused on professional development and best practices and other things in the classroom, giving ourselves a chance to think about how this is a true support system ultimately. So far beyond what we would normally think about accountability, imagine a system that seems to, I'm going to put it this way, that actually works, that works for the benefit of our students and our schools and all those that participate across the state and, and what I think is a remarkable system. We know that we did something unique, and we kind of had debates about what was most appropriate, but really thinking about accountability foundation being embedded in Rule 10, which is, was quite a change. I will tell you, I, I've given it a thought and I've actually spoken to the point on occasion that actually accreditation was the first accountability system, if you want to think of it that way. In the middle sixties, accreditation started to roll into states. But that accreditation system and that, that form of accountability was about doing the minimums. It really was. It was about doing the minimums, and we know that it's so much more than that. Continuous improvement, we've preached for a long time about the importance of doing best practices. But our policies and our rules and our regulations haven't, haven't pulled that together. And this is how we're using AQuest to think about this holistic system, ultimately, of accountability, accreditation, improvement and support, all, all together as a system. And I think that's very important to us. You know, that the six tenants link that together ultimately, that we want to think about quality, and I think that's a really important piece, too, that when we do say quality, it's different than the minimum, right? And I, I think, I've said this several times, that one of the worst things we could go out and advertise about what's happening in our public schools is that we're doing the least that we're required to do for your students every day. No, frankly, we want to do, we want to do the most that we can do. We don't want to be focused on something that's a minimum. And I, our schools are that way, too. They want to do that. And they want to do it without the burden. So we have to think about our support system that we have in place from a state agency perspective as well. And we want to use multiple measures, and we talked about that, quality indicators within Rule 10 that already existed. It allowed us to think about AQuest indicators for the future. And then truly, this is a systems approach, that these things have to come together and work together to be most effective. And so this is really a graphic, a graphic that we had originally created around the waiver application. And at one point, some of the language there was about the principles, trying to demonstrate that the system that we envisioned not only met what was being requested in that waiver, but frankly, was doing what we thought was appropriate to begin with. A system that really thinks about support, growth, collaboration and innovation all around the tenants of AQuest. But also a system of support ultimately, that helps our school districts, that helps, help provide different directions for us in the long run around how we organize the agency. The domains of AQuest, kind of the third box down there, the notion of, those things are, are important for us to think through some of those, those processes collectively among the tenants. And then EBA being a, a critical part of our conversation, not just for the classification of schools, but ultimately for the support of our schools. It's a, it's a, it's a systemic, systematic way to gather input from schools about what they need to get better, what they need from support from us, and how actually we can be better in our own work. And with that, I mean, I transitioned a little bit. I, I'll have Matt Hastings and Sue Anderson come up, but the, the reality is, we released this EBA and we did a, you know, I think remarkable work in a very short period of time last year. And we've had a lot of conversations, I'll go through a little bit more of that. But I think it's really important for us to think about, not only did we ask about the activities across the, the schools, every school submitted their EBA back to us and, and demonstrated how they were performing in those, those activities, but we also asked them a question, how they could be supported in those different tenants and in that different work. And so I'm going to have Matt and Sue come up and, and give a little bit of an overview of, of the EBA request for support, gives you a sense of, of direction, and hopefully those that are linking these things together will see that, that connection. So either I can run the show for you, or I'll let you guys do that. So however you want to go. What's best. All right.
Thanks, thanks very much. We shared some information with you earlier today about some of the initial results of the EBA, and so we're focused in on the support data. And so Matt and I are going to just briefly share that with you. I think you're going to have to run it. We'll start with this, this slide really captures a, an interesting picture of how schools responded with requests for support. And in the EBA instrument, they had the options of professional development support, technical support, and an, and an other category. If they checked other in terms of items of support, they could tell us specifically what that would be. So those support items on the EBA were directly related to the activity items that they, that they completed. And so this graph shows that by, by far and away, the request for professional development support exceeded the technical and the other categories. That top line there, that jagged red line represents the responses for professional development support. Then the blue line represents the technical support requests, and then the other, the other types of support. And you see those are graphed by, by EBA item, and I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add to that graph?
Um, not specifically to this, to this visualization. Maybe just other than the broad, broader point that I think that it is important to highlight, we're presenting some information to you here today about the support side of the EBA. Of course, there was another side of the EBA, the activity side, which is the piece of the EBA that has, I think, probably gotten the most attention from people because it was a minority influencer on the classification system, AQuest classification system. However, what people sometimes forget or is lost in translation is the fact that more than half of the EBA was designed to systematically collect information about how the department and our partner entities like ESUs and others can actually organize ourselves to provide meaningful support in a systematic way for schools. And so, so this is that second half of the EBA, which doesn't get quite as much discussion, but I think that, that that's important. And, and one thing you should know as we move through the slides here is that as one example about how we're taking this information and then infusing it into our work, is the AQuest Conference that the commissioner talked about earlier. Sue's actually done a masterful job of rethinking and redesigning that. So that process is almost completely geared around results that we have gained from the evidence-based analysis. So where we have, where we have seen school districts asking for specific supports, those are the areas that are going to be focused on at the AQuest Conference. So it's, it's really a, sort of a new way in some, some ways of doing business there, so.
And I just want to interject a little bit, too, that I think the intent here is if we have questions or comments, we can ask those throughout the presentation as well, not just after the presentation. And I think what you've just brought up, and Sue, the work you and Matt have done, is really an important piece, how we're transforming not just your work as an agency, but our work as a board, to be very strategic and thoughtful around how are we providing the kinds of supports to schools to really make a difference in student achievement and to be responsible in our share of the process of ensuring that achievement gaps are being closed.
In the first part of Matt's presentation, I am always so encouraged when I hear the progress of AQuest. When we were talking about accreditation and Rule 10 and graduation requirements and those sorts of things, I think we really are taking much more of a leadership role by addressing school in this way rather than the minimum. Because in the past, a lot of our graduation requirements and accreditation piece and whatever has been based on what post-secondary wants us to do or thinks that we should do. And every time I listen to a progress report on AQuest, I'm hearing more of that leadership coming to us and what we're doing. And that's, that's really exciting to me, that, that we're getting away from, say, listening to higher education saying, well, in order for your kids to come here to go to school, they have to do this, this and this. We're making that decision. Thank you.
Seems to me that this is showing us a, a real need for our strategic plan as well, as far as, you know, development goes.
Yeah, I very much agree, and I, I think among those things is data that helps us in that strategic plan as well, so we know where to spend some energy. So I hundred percent agree. I'm going to flip the next slide to him if he gets ready.
I sort of derailed you, I'm sorry, Sue. As we're moving on.
Some Matt always derails us.
Well, one thing I wanted to point out as we move through these, these next couple of slides is that in looking at the responses to those requests for support, we looked at them across all classification levels, but then we wanted to see what differences, if any, we were getting between the needs improvement schools and the good, great and excellent schools. And so we did see some differences as well as some similarities. And so the way these tables are configured will show you the items that schools in all classifications rated as their top requests for support, as well as top requests for support among needs improvement schools and good, great and excellent. So what you see here are the results related to the request for professional development support, and they're organized by tenant and they are ranked in order of frequency. And you'll see there, the top two are related to positive partnerships, relationships and student success. And all, all classification schools requested that support, having to do with strategies to support students in monitoring and managing their learning and in student personal learning plans, as well as measuring and addressing student engagement. And I might put in a plug that the AQuest Conference this year has a pretty important presence with the Gallup organization, they're going to be present, providing a lot of good information and research around student engagement. And there you see curriculum alignment to career-ready standards in the top, top five. But you see, the next item is in green, and that indicates that among good, great and excellent schools, requests for support around career awareness, exploration and preparation instruction is what they were asking for. And then the red indicates the needs improvement schools saw the need for support around formative classroom-based assessments.
So with respect to professional development requests for support, four of the five, top five for needs improvement schools and then good, great and excellent altogether, four of their five, top five requests for support were the same, which was, was, we shared in our meeting earlier today, is interesting to me. But in some ways, that's helpful from a systematic support standpoint, because as we gear our resources towards these top requests for support, we know that in addressing those specific pieces, four out of five times, we're addressing the concerns not just of needs improvement schools or not just of excellent schools, but of all schools in Nebraska. So, and again, that's what you'll be seeing at the AQuest Conference as, as Sue's worked on developing that.
I just have a question on three and four, college and career ready. I think this is very interesting because we're now doing more partnerships with our community business industry, and we're actually not just educating in a vacuum. We're talking about jobs, our students and careers, they may wish to participate. So when it goes career awareness, instructor, exploration and preparation, do you think some of that's related to our new classification of people that are career, have careers, but they're coming back to teach and they're not going through the traditional accreditation? I'm just curious.
I'm not sure about the motivation. I think that, I know that this is an area that is getting a lot
For professional development, yeah.
Yeah, a lot more interest among schools.
It's because of all the buzz on career pathways and
You know, Rich, Rich Cotton and his group have done a fantastic job with their revision processes. Yeah, so I think it's just getting a lot of interest.
It's exciting that there are interests in the EBAs that really have pertinence and relevance, which goes along with engagement.
Yeah, I was just going to highlight, I mean, I think also just the importance of, you know, our career readiness standards, the notion that this is across the curricular areas, it's not just that there's a separate set aside program for, for career preparation, right? That it's actually kind of embedded in what happens in schools. And so I, I don't know, I mean, that, I don't know if the motivations might be on the question itself, but I think a lot of good rationale behind that, and it certainly highlights something for us, so.
Well, and one of the, the exciting things about it is, a lot of those elements, if you look there, I know the Nebraska Career Education Division has a lot of efforts around, and they have fantastic resources and fantastic staff to work with our schools on, on providing those supports. So that's one of the, the nice thing about those supports that have risen to the top is that we definitely have capacity there, in my opinion, anyway, here to deal with those sorts of things, so.
If I may, one other factor, too, is Rich Cotton and his group for years has been working Nebraska in regards to career tech, and he just, all of a sudden, this program has a dominance in AQuest. And so we really benefited from his past work.
Well, this, this slide shows you the top requests for technical support from our schools, and you'll see there, technology to support teaching and learning, supplementing face-to-face instruction with opportunities for online learning, strategies to support students in monitoring their own learning, student personal learning plans. Schools in all, all classifications cited that in their, their top requests for technical support. And then you'll see there, positive partnerships mentioning measuring and addressing student engagement. That was a top request among needs improvement schools. And, and there you go. And then, and then for assessment, sharing assessment results in a timely manner, that was a request, oh wait, I had those turned around, sorry. I had those turned around. The sharing assessment results in a timely manner was a request from needs improvement schools, and then utilizing formal staff evaluation process, and then evaluating new educational programs. So there you see the top requests for technical support, and some of those are directly related to the professional development requests you saw in the previous slide. And then this is the other category, and this is interesting because you'll see no red or green here. So these requests are representative of all classification level schools. And you see some new items there, family engagement, before and after school programs, community partnerships, again, student learning plans, and clear expectations for safe, secure learning environments. So lots of good information we were able to get from our schools around support around supports that they feel that they need.
This is in line with what the NASB report said. You've got to be out there with the stakeholders to help them understand what you're trying to accomplish. And they, at the same time, compose the areas in which they need some help. So it seems to me like it's doable. That's why I'm so amazed that it's a common problem across all of the schools. But it's fixable, in my opinion. So, but it goes along, the importance of the stakeholders, which we've been doing. We acknowledge that. We're good at it. We're going to do more of it. And obviously, we really need to do a lot more based on what you've found, so.
Some of the interesting anecdotally, we're still going through a process of coding. These were open-ended responses on these other categories. So if schools identified that they were looking for other resource supports, they could then say, "What exactly is other?" And many of the responses there were items around, "We would like to know what other schools that are doing this in an effective way, what's their process for, for example, strategies for attendance and participation for families?" And the community partnerships. So I think that, like you said, there's a lot of schools that are eager about that. They're just not exactly sure how best to go about it. Which is also why it's, I think, valuable that we asked in the EBA for schools to identify if they had a model of exemplary practice. Because what you'll see in the AQuest Conference again is some of those sessions will be driven by schools that identified, that they had a model of best practice. And some of our staff are bringing those schools in to share what they're doing around these areas of most need. So I think that's a valuable process.
By chance, have anybody submit the personalized learning plans? The student personal learning plans as a best practice? It's kind of interesting. It's on every slide. Whether it is, "We need support in professional development, technology, or other." I think it really goes to the point that they want students to be engaged in planning their own career pathways for college, career, and civic life. But do we have any best practices you're going to exemplify at AQuest in this?
Yeah, I know Donna Hoffman with Nebraska School Counseling is planning to be involved in the AQuest Conference. And she really has tremendous resources around, developed already around the personal learning plan idea. And she's with Nebraska College Foundation as well. And so she'll be engaged in that conference, and there's a lot of great resources there.
And isn't something can be in a digital backpack so the child can take the personal learning plans wherever he or she goes?
I think it could be. I'll let Donna speak to the specifics of the personal learning plan, but she spent a lot of time on it.
Another reason to maybe consider attending.
So I'm going to let you guys off the hook now. Not too far, though.
As I leave, is this going to be posted in any meetings?
It is, actually. Yeah, it's on the AQuest, the breakout for the AQuest part. So it's up there as a PDF right now. Or so I thought. If it's not right now, we can get it there.
I probably have to refresh.
So the next part of the presentation and the discussion is really around specifically the domain committee work and tenant-by-tenant work as well. And so I'm going to start with the AQuest domain work. And just to give you, Molly, when we get to the positive partnerships piece, that's where I'll kind of queue you in on that. But I want to give an overview of this kind of plan of work. I will tell you that this plan of work is preliminary. And we have a lot of elements still coming together. We've started to develop something that we call the convergence plan and building some efforts within the department around all these different streams of work. But just on AQuest itself, there's a lot of moving parts. And so this is one way to start to make that visible to, not just for kind of our purposes internally, but externally as well. And so quickly, I'll walk through this. The work plan, tenant-by-tenant, includes really pretty much across the board for our domains that we, every tenant pretty much settled on the notion and the need for rubrics. Rubrics around the EBA to improve that. And so that's a solid piece of this puzzle. It's really being handed off now back to the Data and Continuous Improvement Committee and our staff that are working around that. But we've gathered that information from you and your tenant work. And we've, now we're assembling that in the, kind of the next steps of the improvement of the EBA itself. As we do that, we'll end up having a release of those draft rubrics really at the May meeting. And probably gradually, they're coming together and coming out in our conversations with schools. But we really want that practitioner feedback around that process as well. It's really critical to make sure that when folks answer the EBA, that they understand what the, how that information's being used, but also what the best answer is and the most appropriate answer is. And so those rubrics would be designed with that in mind. And so across the tenants, that's part of our responsibility. We've had certainly great, by the way, great staff lead on our tenants, great staff work all over the place. We name a few folks on this plan, which probably scares them. I mean, but the reality is we have people responsible to help bring those elements together. And we have that on there with a rough timeline of some of that work. Within the transitions tenant, and I think again, and I, credit to that committee work, credit to John, a lot of work and conversations around some updates for the EBA. And so we proposed something that I think is reasonable. And I'll get to a slide that has a couple of those specific proposals. But the reality is that's important. And so our team's working on that. And then around educational opportunities and access that we're really, didn't see necessarily a lot of proposed changes, still looking at that. And if there's something else that changes in the meantime. But the reality is we've captured a lot of good information, as you could see from Matt and Sue's presentation. And we want to be able to keep a few years of that data coming together. So there's some need to think about the EBA for the future, yeah.
Addition of our discussion this morning about transition from preschool to-
Yeah, so I'll actually get to a slide on that one. So, yeah, thank you for that, because I think that's in there as well. So I will get to it, and I think we have a specific one in there. So actually, what you're probably telling me is that's a little off. You do have one recommendation. Thank you. I missed one. We'll go ahead and go to positive partnerships, relationships, and student success. This is the basic tenant that we have. But I'm going to, and this is what we said back when we originally established the tenants. So each one of these slides just rehashes that information, but really important information, still guiding our work. I think it's really actually powerful to have a statement says, that says, "The State Board believes something." And so this really has guided our work, essentially helping us establish the direction for AQuest. So here's the positive partnerships tenant report. I think, I'm going to turn it over to Molly, if she may have a few of what you talked about at the domain level. This one's just the EBA recommendation, but you had the whole domain committee meeting.
So I'll just add some highlights. First of all, we talked about transitions. And the two items are successful transition based on early childhood, which includes infant toddler program to preschool program, and from home or pre-kindergarten to kindergarten. And the second bullet was school implement strategies to support success transition between programs or students with exceptionalities. And I think that's important that our students with special needs, we need to make sure that in early childhood and in transition, we don't forget it's every student, every day. In regard to the opportunity and access, tenant transitions between high school and post-secondary. And then we also talked about support for GE students, GED students. Because it's not enough just to get the high school equivalent. So we want to make sure that they're involved with our systemic plan for them to talk about their futures in college and career. And we also did say that it's important with the industry certification. If that is the goal, let's try to help our 245 school districts use industry certification or credentials as well. And then positive partnerships tenant as part of my domain, our domain is success and access, is consider addition of schools having purposeful strategies and processes to assist observable positive relationships between staff and students. That was one thing that earlier Don Lynn brought up. Is, you know, for a kid's effort, sometimes it's that one teacher that takes time to connect with that student so that student sees something in himself or herself. So those positive relationships, we just really still want to see how important our teachers and support staff throughout the school are. And maybe we'll all have some quarterly evaluation based on the data collected. And that goes back to the red highlighted, Sue, those ones that want formative assessments. So I think when we look at the whole child, those also should be considered, can be part of those formative analytics.
So Commissioner, I have a question on this. So when you look at an EBA recommendation, are you looking at that for 2016, '17? And if so, will it be coming back, for example, in May? So we clearly see the language and schools can see the language of any changes to the EBA?
Yeah, in fact, our conversations will kind of go from this kind of handoff to the data committee that will meet on Friday. We'll actually be going through some of this work and have that in our recommendations for May if we believe that we can get that implemented for next year. So absolutely. And I'll go ahead and, we got, Molly hit most of the highlights on, so transitions I have here. So Molly actually ran through the, each one of these. So we have the positive partnerships recommendation. Here's the transitions tenant recommendation as well. And we have, we have the one that I, that I-
I forgot that one.
Missed. Oh, yeah, yeah, you did. Pat Tim was talking about that. I missed on the other kind of consolidated one. But the reality of going through each one of these recommendations with the data committee in our work, tying that in, looking at how we might make those adjustments. Actually, kind of back to the transitions tenant, they actually have specific questions that they would already say, "Hey, look, we'd like to work on these." And so we'll have to frame that, bring that back together for May, though. And so schools know. And these even still, if we add a change of question, the rubrics will reflect that too. So there'll be clearer, I think, clearer direction for folks in responding to that. I'll go ahead and jump forward to the AQuest domain work plan for teaching and learning. And I, I'm going to, in a second, turn it over to Maureen for the similar thing. She is actually going to be able to do the college and career-ready piece and the teacher effectiveness one, or the educator effectiveness piece of this. And I'll end up doing more of the assessment. But again, same thing, that we've identified the basic work within this plan and that we'll lay those things out. And I'll go ahead and move to the college and career readiness piece for Maureen to cover, so.
Well, in our committee meeting, our domain committee meeting today, we reviewed the content standards revision process timeline. And that timeline can be found on the agency website to be able to review. And we received an update by the staff on the physical education standards revision process. This hasn't been reviewed since 2006, so it's been 10 years. So that revision process is now underway. They have quite a group working on that across the state. The anticipated completion for that is August 2016. And the anticipated state board approval will be September 2016. And then schools may be able to implement those physical education standards in 2017, '18. So that was under college and career ready.
And then I'll switch to educator effectiveness as well.
Well, Janine Thielar and I, along with Don Lynn, we've been talking in Zoom conference for the last two months and have, we will bring more information next month on that. But I would like to, and we highlighted in our domain meeting this morning, all of the board members receive this Nebraska At A Glance from the National Council on Teacher Quality and NCTQ, which is a full review of the state laws, rules, and regulations that govern the teaching profession. And when I received this last week in the mail, I was like shocked. Sitting there looking at this going, "Oh, my gosh." Back in 2009, we had a grade they gave us of D minus. In 2011, they rated us and gave us a grade of D minus. In 2013, a grade of D minus. And this, for 2015, a D. And I'm like, "This cannot be right." But I did look, and I turned and I looked at the information that they went over. And just so that the people in the room here understand, this group is an organization, NCTQ, is an organization that is funded by organizations that promote a corporate influenced reform, school reform agenda. And that their ratings actually are flawed. And I did some Googling because I was just, like I said, in shock. So I did some Googling and found an excellent article that was done by Linda Darling-Hammond, who is one of the finest education researchers in the country. And she did this report back in 2013. But she talked about it, it rates programs on a list of criteria ranging from selection and content preparation to coursework and student teaching aimed at the development of teaching skills. While the report appropriately focuses on these aspects of teacher education, it does not accurately reflect the work of teacher education programs nationally. And what I thought was interesting was that NCTQ's website indicated that fewer than 1% of programs in the country fully cooperated with the study that they did. They collected documents through websites and public records request. And the ratings published in the report are based on partial and often inaccurate data and fail to evaluate teacher education quality. And I talked with Sharon Cox this morning about this. And Sharon had done some research on this a couple of years ago. And the one thing she said was that, "Maureen, on all of these different indicators that they grade you on, if you are not doing it, then you automatically get a zero." And as I looked over it, it's just, it's not the Nebraska way at all. So I felt a whole lot better after I read this report and came this morning and had this discussion to find out that, you know, if you don't have good data, you're not going to be able to put out the information. And so it's skewed data. And I would hate for Nebraskans across the state to think that we have a grade of D when we can all sit in this room and know that we just really have great things going on, especially with AQuest.
Well, and I think one of the key points, and you'll see a lot of different, maybe kind of one of the flags for me on different reports that come out and talk about different things. Well, a lot of the, some of those reports, and in this particular case, it's true, they do a survey of states and they look at policies. So what I want you to understand is it's actually based on how we do policy, the fact that, the fact that they're looking for specific things that are delivered in specific way. And so sometimes Nebraska doesn't look good on those. But I will tell you, we have work to do around effective educator and how we build those support systems. And so I want us to take information and use it effectively. And I think what I, I think our conversation around this tenant work is, what are the things that make teachers most effective and what are the support systems that we need? And that's what we gather out of our EBA, which is extremely meaningful.
And I think that's one of the things, if I can just interject a second, that's important. This week, they talked a lot again about our responsibility at a policy level. So the D may be our D relative to what we have put in place or have not as it relates to teacher preparation programs. So as we think about how we move forward and things that we need to examine, you know, that may be more of a D to us than to our teacher education programs on what we're doing or not doing as it relates to a policy structure around teacher preparation. So those are the kinds of questions that we probably have to ask ourselves a little bit more so than maybe teacher prep programs.
And Molly, or was it you, Rachel, that passed this around?
Yeah.
Well, as I looked to see who some of the researchers were, where the information came from, Linda Darling-Hammond was one of them. So that was nice to see.
So I'm gonna transition us to assessment now. And again, our, um, tenant itself and the notion, and I think when you look at what we've designed in the EBA and our and our, what the presentation that I'll give, again, tied tied back to our statement of what the state board believes, right? We believe that, um, that multiple assessment sources, national, state, classroom base should be used to measure student achievement. This this whole notion of where we're going and this notion of our areas of focus that we identify within the tenant are really quite quite important, quite critical, that individual and adaptive assessment. We were saying this stuff, uh, a year ago, right? So this is, this is what we've been talking about for a long time. And so now it it just, it just seems, um, that perhaps the opportunities are all in front of us to really design the system as we as we see appropriately. And not not just as we've done Aquest, but the components of Aquest, the tenants of Aquest. And so the assessment committee, um, which Rachel and Lilly are both on the assessment committee. Um, and so I'll try to do this justice, so you you're welcome to interject when I don't. But, um, this is what I'm gonna walk through with you today and what the assessment tenant committee has worked on today. That realistically, that we're trying to reestablish and refocus our efforts on a vision and a path forward for assessment in the state of Nebraska. And others, like we talked last time, a lot of different, um, a lot of different influences on us relative to where the assessment system goes and how we get there. But we really do truly see next year as a transition year where we need to make progress towards that vision, towards the vision of where we want ultimately to be able to go. And that we we want to have a new, establish a new truly balanced system of of assessment, certainly by two thousand seventeen, eighteen and beyond. Uh, there's a lot of things, as I walk through this, that we can have some conversations around. But it's maintaining that balance and purpose also with the with the other tenants, not having assessment be the end all and be all. We did, by the way, talk today, and and I think it was a good reminder, and it kind of was a reminder for me. Do you know what NESA stands for? No, it actually means Nebraska State Accountability. That's actually what it means. And if you think about that and you think about this complete shift to where where we've been with Aquest, it's it's not just about assessment, is it? And so we really have to rethink where we are, how we're going there, what we need to do. And we have to think about what that future is and and our message, the state board's message and my message, the department's message to our schools about where we're going. And the fact is that this isn't about just assessing students, but it's actually about supporting teachers and thinking about transitions and thinking about how to how to support teachers and thinking about making that system better. And so that original graph that I shared with you, as I go through this, remember that assessment's one component of this and so many other support systems and so many other elements of data are important to us. So it, we we, I think, I think Lilly and Rachel would agree, setting a path that's consistent with state and federal requirements and what we're seeing with S is one part of our driver. But frankly, setting a path that's good for Nebraska students is our most important driver in this work. Um, I I would just tell you, just in a kind of a quick update, um, and I'm sure you're curious, but the 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 fact that matters, we're about a third of the way through the window of the current NESA assessment. By the end of it, we have roughly nine hundred thousand separate assessments that take place. We're close to, well, two hundred ninety thousand. I I love when they give me the data that says as of nine AM, that's of as of nine AM this morning, right? As of, as of nine AM this morning, that's where we're at. Uh, and we have the English Language Arts Field Test Sessions going as well. And and that's an important part of this because we're trying to move towards our college and career readiness piece and including text dependent analysis, which is another element of the assessment. But again, you can see over a third of our of our, uh, of that element of that work is also completed as of today. We've not had any major, you know, problems, obviously. You would have known, you would have heard from me. Trust me, I I don't sleep much anyway, but when there's problems, I sleep less. And so, uh, the the reality is I, you know, we we at least feel good. And I needed to tell you that in the context of the next parts of the message, because you need to understand that as well. Um, just truly trying to look forward and going, we have a a vision for assessment in Nebraska and a process that I'm gonna outline that starts to put us on that path to where I think we really, really need to be. And there's a a quote, I know it's a little hard to read on there, but from Rick Stiggins, who also nationally known, done some work in Nebraska in the past around balanced assessment. And I, and I'll see if I can even read this. But while annual accountability standardized testing has raised awareness of some of the problems schools face, it has done little to help us solve those problems. In that sense, it has let us down as a school improvement strategy. And it's Rick Stiggins from his revolutionize assessment, empower students, inspire learning. Uh, it's a book he, I think he actually released, um, I don't remember if it's last year or a year before, but I remember reading it cover to cover, not a hard read, by the way, but very informative. And he spent his whole career thinking about what assessment ought to be. When you talk about balanced assessment, Rick Stiggins is that person who almost, well, not just wrote this book, but wrote several books on that subject. Um, the focus for us is to think of that first part of that quote, the fact that it's not NESA as a Nebraska State Accountability, but that we do have state assessment within our accountability framework, right? It's not just testing. And so we have to think about what, not just the vision of the assessment system is, but what the vision of Aquest is and assessments component of Aquest as a whole. And so we know that we have that work to do. When I talk about balanced assessment, and this was a graphic I think we used over a year ago, um, relative to thinking about balanced assessment, that there's particular purposes for assessment that we see across as a support system ultimately. But we know assessment is both an important measure, but also an important support. A support for schools, a support for for students, parents even, in in thinking about where we're going. But it's assessment for something. It's assessment for teaching, it's assessment for learning, it's assessment for improvement, accountability, policy. As you, as we are able to use information to help improve policy, obviously support, and most importantly, I would say, student success. And if it's not all of those things, I think we failed to do our job to provide leadership. And it's not that one test does all those things. It's about that whole spectrum of the assessment system that we have to provide leadership on. And so that's one element of the balanced assessment vision. If you think about this path that we're on, uh, we have to move beyond the requirements. And so when I talk about accreditation and where we've been and folks doing the minimum does not get us where we want to be. Um, we can check boxes all day long. We can check those boxes off and say, yeah, we accomplished what they they required us to do. But if we could move beyond those requirements and ultimately to those best practices towards this vision, then we can actually do something quite unique. We ought to and need to be able to coordinate and integrate our national, state and local assessments into a data reporting system that helps us get better at a school level, at our level, at at a, at a student level, that those things ought to come together quite well. And what we're doing around data, what we're doing around data reporting is really quite important. The whole notion of individualized adaptive assessment tied to growth and competency. It's too bad Glenn's not here right now because I could turn the floor over to Glenn to talk about competency based assessment. So he missed his shot, I guess, is the way I'll put it. But the the reality is, we know that the work that the board's been doing around competency base is important, that we understand that we're assessing for the purposes of students moving forward on their path as well. And that's part of what competency based education is. But we also know that to individualize and personalize learning, um, that if students don't know, have their benchmarks, they, we don't, we don't want to be stuck forever in an environment where your course content is always one semester and then your second semester. You know, when we teach the middle, we teach no one. We don't teach to every student in that process. So how do we think about a an assessment system that helps us do personalized learning plans in a better way? And so that's what I see there. And then classroom based assessment, that we have to trust our teachers to actually do the formative assessment and do that other work, but bring that together in a holistic approach and not spend our springs frankly worried about assessment. This is completely wrong. It's completely backwards. And unfortunately, we all contribute to it. We take our responsibility for that, probably me more than anyone. But the reality for me, thinking about this, is that this is our moment in time to set that path and that opportunity, that that assessment isn't something done as an event, that assessment isn't something that dominates the spring semester of our schools and our students, and that we think about how that balanced approach comes together to set our our vision and our path for the future. And so I see that as just, um, critical for us.
I think Pat has a
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Well, I was just gonna make a comment, um, yeah, no, I'm sorry. I was gonna make a comment in the fact that when you you brought up Rick Stiggins, I I I appreciate the fact that that you brought his his, uh, name up and and his, uh, concepts because the first time I met Rick Stiggins, he talked about, uh, student led assessment and personal learning plans and how our kids needed to be involved in their, uh, education not being told what to do. And he's never given up on that. And and I think that's something that we really need to understand, uh, that he has some marvelous things to to tell us and we need to listen.
Yeah, Molly.
You know, it could in view of the fact that here we are approving another teacher professional training program, I have concerns as to whether the students who are in this process, that they are being introduced to these concepts and what it means and if I don't think that their training is complete, if these kind of, there is not some kind of program that they go through to understand what their obligations are to beyond teaching a specific curriculum, that there's this accountability. And do you think that this is occurring? Is this an area in which we need to do more promotion?
No, I I think you're right, and I'm so proud of you for your systems level thinking, Molly. The reality is, you're completely right. We can't separate that issue of teacher preparation from the notion of what we think are best practices in our classrooms, right? And so it is important that we think about how we review and examine teacher prep programs, how we do that work. And we need to do that all together, not just taking for granted that everything's working well there. And they're, by the way, they're coming to us asking for what's the best approach for us to prepare teachers for the future. But it's critical that we do that work. So I, you know, I
I feel like we should be getting, teaching a lesson in Aquest to
No, I I think it's a great point.
The teacher training programs. I mean, they're exposed to it, but I think we have to be more intentional
Yeah.
in making sure that
And that our policies also come together along along those lines, that when we're reviewing and working with teacher prep, though, just like what we're trying to do on the school side of the equation, that we're communicating that, that certainly in those institutions that train our teachers, they want, they want to know what the latest is. I mean, I I will tell you, and I I feel as if we're trying to provide not just the latest for Nebraska, but frankly, the latest for what the best practices are nationally. If you look across the country, I think we're doing unique things. Um, I won't say we're the only ones. I think other places are trying to go there too. But it it's something that I think our institutions that are doing, that are our teacher prep institutions, educator prep institutions, both for teachers and for administrators. Um, it's critical that we figure figure that piece of the puzzle out.
Molly, did you still have a comment?
One thing I was gonna share from NASB that was kind of an aha moment for me. They said the summative test should only be about two percent of student time. But they said a lot of time is spent on formative tests that may or may not be really building capacity or being in alignment with your state standards. And so they said there's something called an audit, assessment audit, that you don't mandate, but you might want to consider in your assessment tenant, thinking about some sort of model system wide for, um, assessment audits. And and I thought that was interesting because they said sometimes in all good intentions, districts will choose to just test these kids to death, thinking they're helping them. But if they're not in alignment with standards, it's just a distraction, so.
That also is in context, I just want to add, uh, often on the high stakes perspective, that what happened in so many schools around the country has been the feeling of high stakes, that everything is focused on that score and test prep, so to speak, for that score as opposed to fundamentally
And we don't want, I think it's also about what the practices are at the school level and us providing leadership and professional development and all those things that we saw. I think it's remarkable if the, what Matt and Sue talked about, if you notice, that two of the, um, areas that were highlighted for needs improvement schools were around assessment. One of them being asking for support around that very question around how to properly use formative assessment. And and the other one really being about getting data to use more effectively, more efficiently from us as well. And so I I think when you look at it, you realize that we have folks going, they're grasping for, uh, elements of help or asking for elements of help around assessment that we need to deliver. I mean, I really honestly just feel that this is the time to be able to pull that
Is Dean's magic dashboard advisor almost ready to fly?
Maybe next month I should have, well, I don't know if we got, I need an overview for you to see this because that's remarkable work that frankly, you're, you're, I know you're an advocate for it, I actually I am too. Um, so, uh, so in our vision planning, so, um, I kind of come back to that imagine slide that I had in the prior slides. Imagine that we, um, by two thousand seventeen, eighteen, we have this new integrated assessment and support system in place that's truly aligned with Aquest and classroom and teacher level supports and and truly focused and and provides focused and balanced assessment and aligned with best practices and and focused ultimately. Imagine what that looks like, right? Well, that's what we're gonna be doing. That's what we're gonna be spending our time on. So we're gonna be gathering that input in in the context of Aquest, also in the context of other changes that are going on around us. This opportunity for us to think about this and and develop our relationships with practitioners and get them engaged in the conversation over this, over this next year. Give us a a chance to really have opportunity to listen to those, to those, uh, practitioners across the state and finding out what we think is really right. In again, in the context of everything going on, which I'll talk about a little bit more, but the, I also want to, uh, Commissioner's Aquest Advisory Group. And we had a great conversation in the assessment tenant around, it can't just be about assessment. It has to be about Aquest. Um, and an element of that, an element of that vision has to be how all of these things balance together. And so I think it's important that we that we think through that. Here's a little bit of the the plan and and details that you probably can't read, or at least I can't quite read from here, but the the notion of what we have to do around our vision planning, that we have to gather stakeholder input, uh, create the Commissioner's Advisor Group, the practitioner engagement, the listening sessions, surveys, other ways to gather that input, really listen to the expert input, that we have that opportunity with Brian Gollan and Chad Buckendall that have been critical advisors already. We've had conversations with them and they're going, they, by the way, they tell us, and I I I probably need to bring them in to report to you at some point, when national level experts of their caliber are telling me, wow, you've thought of ways, and they're not talking to me, but we have thought of ways to do this differently and that we are changing, changing the perspective on our our theory of action. Where the theory of action in the old accountability model was, well, once they know that they aren't doing well, they will do well, right? They'll find a way to do well. Well, the reality is, I think it became the wrong measures, that when you're not doing well on math, but you're, you keep going, well, we're gonna keep drilling math and drilling math. And then you go, well, did anyone realize realize that, you know, ninety percent of our students are ELL? Perhaps maybe maths isn't exactly our problem, maybe we have to address the right things, right? I mean, that's a, is an example of the kind of absurdity of if we don't have a better theory of action, we don't get the right things done. And if we don't measure quality, we don't have a way to get the right things done. And so we have, we have all those things. We want to think about ways that we integrate the other data from other assessment instruments, other assessments being done, and spend this, spend some time going, how do we make that system truly work for us? And I think there's some things we could be doing right now. And so our, that'll be back to the Data Continuous Improvement Committee to make some recommendations around how we think about other data systems, data sources, other assessment that could come into play for us within within Aquest. Um, the other part of this is we kind of have a transition year. And somehow we have to get through this, and I'll I'll talk through a couple of these other things. We tried to come up with something. I I want to think about it as somewhat a bridge year, a transition year. So if I gotta come up with a name, if I want to call it NESA Bridge or something else, right? I don't know what to call it. We don't, we don't wanna, well, we'll get some really good thoughtful folks on the the naming convention for that. But that's just for one year. Uh, then we have well beyond that that we're thinking about. So as we're doing the vision work, we're gonna use the transition year to get some other work accomplished. And so I will talk a little bit more about that. I don't know if there's, I think I'll hit all these other points in this slide. So if you think about sixteen seventeen as a transition year, that somehow we do this, implement NESA as a bridge and and figure this out and have a truly scaled back system. And here's what I, I'll I'll walk you through these these major points. A scaled back assessment system, when you look at grades three through eight, we gotta have reading and math. We have a requirement by law somehow to carry out assessment at those levels, federal and state. Uh, we also have grades five and eight in science. Uh, but I really want to spend this time being able to explore the integration of other assess- assessments and data used in schools currently to develop a data integration of those other data elements as well, to bring that together and see how we can use that in AQuest, and see how we can scale back NISA relative to that work. I'm going to jump down to the last bullet because I want to talk a little bit about writing, then I'm going to come back to high school. So the fact of the matter is, we're not planning to administer. My recommendation to you is that we do not administer an online writing test next year. First of all, I will tell you, the problems that we've had around that, there's no possible way that I'm going to go down that path again. And I think there's no, you know why I know that? Because I think I look at it all, you say, no, we're not going down that path again. So the reality is, we're not going to, I'm recommending that, we'll come back with that formally in May. But this is the first time we're saying this publicly, just so you know, right? This is the first time we're giving that notice to schools, this is where we're going. And we might get some pushback on it, by the way, because it's been a pretty solid source of data for schools. But the reality is, I can't be down, we can't go down that path because we're beating down a path that frankly is not really where we want to be in the long run. And so we have to think about that. So at the very least, that's not going to happen. Currently, state law, currently state law tells us that we have to do writing at at least one grade level. We do three right now, so at least at one. So we have some options. We're going to bring back options to you around what those things could be. I mean, one option certainly could be, we have a written, you know, a paper pencil type of test. Lilly loves paper pencil types of tests. We have that one. But I'll tell you, that writing test by itself is not on our current standards. And so I don't know what's our, so we're going to bring back some recommendations around in May for you to be able to think through of how we accomplish that. There's maybe other ways that we can accomplish that. And we have a couple of moving parts that probably is better left for the Legislative Committee report, but I don't know what our status will be on the changes that we've requested within the legislature. LB 930, and I'll jump back to the high school side, but LB 930 has several components, not just the notion of a college entrance exam, but providing us some freedom and flexibility to do some of the other assessment vision that we wanted. We also included some language in LB 1066 that gave us some freedom and flexibility, and we're hoping with 1066 on final reading that that will make it through. That was our technical bill. We had some other changes that provided that opportunity. Going back to the high school side. In high school, we know ultimately, if 930 passed, it would say thou shalt have a college entrance exam as part of that equation from the state side. And I would tell you, I think it would pass just a lot of other circumstances going on right now. But the reality for us is, I, and I'll think about it, we'll certainly review, we'll see where the session ends, we'll see other things. By May, we'll know whether or not, number one, the law says that we must do that. I think the question for you, and what I want you to think about from a leadership standpoint for the Board on Assessment Vision, is would we want to go that way anyway? I know the Board voted to support that bill in the first place. We're looking at, does the current language and statute allow that? It allows certain conversations around that. At the federal level, you know, there's a lot of states that have adopted either ACT or SAT as part of their plan. And so when we would review the law, and we'll have to do that, we'll review and make sure we dot i's and cross t's, but I suspect we'll bring back that proposal that would at least allow us that option. Just like writing, I don't know that it makes a lot of sense for us to go one more year of NISA at high school if that's not where we're going. So I would tell you that it makes little sense that we spend essentially one-seventh of a contract on that when we could think about, and this is where I present a couple of different options, we could think about a full-scale pilot of the college entrance exam. And the reason that I say that is, if 930 doesn't pass, there's still the pilot program, and we'd have to look at the possibilities within that. But at least an option for us to be thinking about, that we be able to scale that up and think differently. We're going to have to make a case on the federal level and others, a lot of work to do around that, but at least gives us a chance to be more thoughtful about that feature. Certainly option number two, I mean, there's other things that are happening around national assessment instruments and how that's taking place and other ways to accomplish that. I feel, and I tell you, I still don't think that even with ESAA in place, that high school is figured out, right? I don't think that we've figured out what assessment ought to look like in high school. I think we ought to provide more leadership in that. I do believe that with college entrance exams, part of that process is a gateway test to students' futures in post-secondary, and it means in community college and others. And I think Lilly raised it at the assessment tenant meeting, that we ought to be talking to our community colleges and the other post-secondary institutions across the state and finding out where they're at. So I think we could use a transition year to be talking about, community colleges are going to use a different entrance exam into...
Accuplacer.
Yeah, Accuplacer, which is an SAT product. I think it's time for us to provide the leadership around, this is what in Nebraska gets a student from a Nebraska high school into a post-secondary institution. And also, we have to do that conversation about what puts them in the best path for career exploration and other. And so how do those things come together? And when we're doing our assessment vision work, in addition to taking this transition year opportunity, we have to find a way that we pull all those elements together. I just looked at the time, and John Whittles is going to kill me, I think. He hasn't given me the signal that I have to stop yet, but I got on a roll.
No, I think it's good.
Yeah, absolutely.
Two comments. The first is, at our national meeting, a lot of these schools are saving time in testing because they don't do reading and writing. They do English, Language Arts as one. So if in fact we are considering that, I hope that ELA will save time, but it would have to be fusion of the standards since they're set a little bit...
Actually, our standards are together. And so one of the proposals we had in 930 was to actually bring that together. So that is what we've got to do. I just honestly, that's what we've got to do.
And then the second comment would be in regard to the second option on that last slide, is if in fact, if in fact, use existing other national assessment instrument, if we did, for example, let's just say we did the ACT instead of the NISA next year. But I do think that that's the one thing that people have been saying to me. If we have state standards in reading, writing, math, science, you have to do an alignment study because some states add extra questions pertinent to their own standards. And I didn't know if that's part of your assessment group's conversation, but...
Yeah, and actually, that alignment's absolutely critical for us to be able to do that work. And so I'm glad you highlight that. It's, no matter how we think about integrating different data sources, we have to think about the alignment of those sources, making sure that we're not just like other entities that might pull just miscellaneous things together, that it makes sense.
It has to be true to our vision and our standards.
Absolutely.
And that's why I do think what's so important from the assessment tenant's perspective is what we're talking about is 2016-17, a transition year. And now and into 2016-17 is building that vision, but also really being able to communicate clearly with schools what it looks like for a transition year, so that we're not, you know, making decisions midstream during next year. We need to know what next year will look like.
And so, I mean, I'm not going to go too far into concluding thoughts on this front, but I just kind of back to that broader, that broader, bigger, bolder, broader, broader better, I got it all spit out eventually, that we outlined last year with AQuest and what we've done so far. You know this, next year's where the work is really important in a lot of areas, but we continue to build on prior work. And that's what I, we're hitting our benchmarks of getting things accomplished and moving the system forward. And I think that's, it's really, I mean, it's a remarkable time. I've said this to principals before, that I think it's the greatest time in the history of Nebraska to be a principal. We're opening up opportunities to do what's right in our schools, and I hope we're grasping that all across the state. And so our next steps, our next steps, we've got to, we'll come back in May. So even though I've talked about this seemingly fairly certainly, we come back in May with actually much more of that certain plan. You will have to, on different elements, the decision points, there's quite a few in June that we have to make relative to what the transition year looks like. But we'll present that very fully in May. We'll have a good sense of what all those different possibilities are. We'll know what the end of the legislative session is. We'll have more time to look at the federal requirements and be able to do that. And then I think really important that May through September, probably longer, frankly, probably longer, but throughout as we're going, that we're really detailing what the vision is for the future and engaging our stakeholders across the state and being active in making sure that they feel not only well-informed, but a part of the process as well, so.
You know, one of the themes for the Early Childhood, the Institute for Early Childhood, their theme is to create in Nebraska the best place in the world for a child to grow up. I believe what we're doing here, we are creating a system that provides the best educational system possible for all students at all ages.
Okay, any other questions?
I've worn you down, probably.
If not, we've got two other items on the agenda that if we can be quick, we will wrap them up today. So Policy Committee, or Strategic Planning, I forgot. Sorry, I was skipping over that almost. Yep.
The word strategic planning.
You each have one minute on the next three committees now.
The Subcommittee for Strategic Planning is set to meet tomorrow. One thing I will share with the full Board is FSG is kind of finishing up the second phase of the project, which has been the input session. They've been gathering a lot of input. The interviews and surveys are done. The final input activity is the Key Influencers Meeting, which is scheduled for next Tuesday in Omaha. That is meant to be a meeting where the key influencers meet with FSG. As a matter of fact, no staff is going, except for myself and Carol, just to make sure that the technology works. Knock on wood. But anyway, so we did want to let you know, thank all of you for suggesting people to come. We've had a nice response, and so we will have that meeting next Monday. And then, and I'll send this out in a board meeting at a glance, but in May, after the conclusion of the business meeting on Friday, we are planning to have a second steering committee meeting with the FSG staff to start putting together the recommendations for the plan, which we will want everyone's input, so.
That might have been a bit more than a minute, but...
So we'll get information out, but plan on your schedule that Friday after our business meeting, we will have probably three hours, so it'll probably be till 1:30 or 2:00 on that Friday, that we will be having a planning session with FSG as a full board. Thank you.
That's in May.
Yep.
Pat, Tim, Policy.
We reviewed B9, the policy B9, which has to do with rule development, and we determined that it was, needed no changes, so it will just continue on as it is. We had an excellent discussion about board member expenses, and we made some wonderful suggestions, and we'll do some, looking into that one more time. We hope to do some work in between now and May so that we can get a draft to the Board in May and then turn around and be able to vote in June. So we have that taken care of before our summer break. The Board Committees, we discussed, and that will bring, that will come to the Board in May for adoption. Several committees have been added and defined. And, let's see, what did I, oh, and, we have approved a resolution to resolve about State Fire Day, which is going to be observed the 13th of May, and, there you go.
All right, any questions or comments? All right. Lilly.
Thank you, Pat.
You're welcome. Legislative.
Okay, we will make this very quick. Did you realize today is the 57th day for the Legislature? There are three days left. They do not meet tomorrow, on Friday. They meet next Tuesday and Wednesday, that would be April 12, 13. And there is a third day that they set aside, which will be April 20th for the finalizing of any paperwork, probably signing papers, et cetera. To summarize, we as a Board agree to either support or remain neutral on 13 different bills. And so we have four bills, which Brian is going to address, LB 694, 930, 1066, 1086. Some have gone to the Governor already, some are on select file. Brian?
Well, actually, that's wrong, Lilly, because the Legislature is still in session. So LB 930 advanced to final reading this afternoon.
There we are. It happens while we've been here.
So in that regard, Assessment, it is one step closer. And most likely then would be on final reading come next Wednesday, if I count my days correctly.
Okay.
LB 694 was a bill that Senator Crawford introduced on our behalf. It exempted from the Transparency Act for Contracts, the personal contracts that our vocational rehabilitation division works with families with. That was signed by the Governor. LB 1086, that dealt with the physician, is the only one who can sign an order for a student for their, is it asthma?
Asthma.
The asthma plan, he signed that bill today also, so that's now been enacted that lets other licensed health providers do that work. And depending, they've now made it to final reading. LB 1066, the infamous technical, non-technical amendment bill, is on final reading, and it may go to the Governor yet today. So today's been a more productive day in legislation, largely because of we're in town and they all decided to move forward. I don't think so, but anyway.
And as you tell, this is why we're the very last thing on the agenda, because we knew during the time frame it would change. So thank you very much, Brian. Very helpful. Are there any questions about any other bills?
Yeah. So that's it for the Legislative Committee. So we're moving to adjournment, and then I just have one brief announcement for everybody. So Item 6, adjournment, the regularly scheduled meeting of the State Board of Education will reconvene at 9:00 a.m. tomorrow in this room.